Ladies and gentlemen, we've called to order the March 27th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. First thing is a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Where does that...
First item is always the approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Move approval.
We've got a motion and a second. Donna and Craig?
George.
All those in... Oh, George, I'm sorry. George Lawrence. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A like sign. Next item, three, is the item on consent. Would anybody care to pull this item? If not, I'll read it into the record and I'll need a motion. Point West Town Center requests for preliminary plat approval for a commercial subdivision to be known as Point West Town Center. So, do I need a motion?
Look at the draft as presented.
Motion by?
Second.
Second. In. Jerry? Gerald? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A like sign. Item four is a public hearing. Quail Ridge, Inc. Stephen?
Good evening Chairman Hamner. My name is Stephen Dirduff, Senior Planner, Long-Range Planning. This evening we have a request to amend the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. This request is to remove two segments of 61st and 65th Street from the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is required by state law and must be approved by the state. And our, the Indian River County plan was approved in 1990 and substantially revised in 1998. To refresh everyone's memory, I'm going to, and for those in the audience who don't understand the process, I'm going to briefly describe the comprehensive plan amendment process. I'm sorry, I got the wrong slide here. There are two amendment windows per year, January and July, and this amendment was submitted during this January 2008 window and was the only one submitted. The comprehensive plan amendment process starts with the application submitted to the Community Development Department where it's reviewed. From there, it comes here to the public for a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've outlined that in blue noting that it's at that stage now. The next stage would be transmission of a public hearing before the Board of County Commissioners. The application would be transmitted to the DCA and other state and regional agencies. Within 60 days, the DCA transmits objections, recommendations, and comments report to the county. The Board of County Commissioners holds a final public hearing, and the adopted amendments are transmitted to the DCA for compliance and review. This is the roadway grid in 1998, and as you can see, the extended road barely even reaches halfway to I-95. This grid was expanded in 2005, and as you can see, the grid now reaches west of I-95 well into the central part of the county. This grid plan was adopted in 2005 through an amendment to the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. The roadway grid was adopted because we didn't know what would happen in this area and needed to ensure that an adequate roadway system would be in place if needed to accommodate higher densities development. Subject segments of 61st and 65th Streets are part of that grid extension. However, it's important to know and to understand that these two roadway segments are paper streets only and no roads or right-of-way exist west of 74th Avenue at this time. I have highlighted the two segments in red right there so that they're easily identifiable, and if approved, the extended roadway grid would look like this. And move on now to an aerial perspective that I have highlighted in solid red are the two streets in question, that 65th and 61st Street. The solid red are in existence. The dotted red lines are the two segments that are proposed to be removed. I'd like to also point out at this time that to the west of 90th Avenue, there's an environmentally sensitive area that has not been developed yet, and these two roadways extend into that area. A closer look, excuse me, a closer look into the area provides there is an existing bridge at 69th Street, and there is an existing bridge crossing the 82nd Avenue Canal, and those are the only bridges in this area at this time. Projected roadways, you can see 69th, 65th, 61st, and 57th Street extending to the canal. 69th Street extends all the way out to 82nd Avenue. The others all end at the canal. The dotted line there is the extension of 61st Street, which would border the south boundary of the Quail Valley Golf Course. There is the extension that would cut through the Quail Valley Golf Course, and here is the 74th Avenue alignment. It's important to know also that 74th Avenue is not included in this deletion. I'm going to zoom in on 74th Avenue and 69th Street here for a second and show you the existing bridge in 69th Street crossing over the Indian River Farms Canal, and then there's also the Sebastian River District Canal, and then the proposed alignment for 74th Avenue. You'll notice they're both on, 74th Avenue is on the west side of the two canals. At this point, the Sebastian River Canal makes a left turn and goes west, so 69th Street only had to cross one of those canals with the bridge. We slide further to the south. You'll see 65th Street ends at the Indian River Farms Canal, and then you can see the alignment for 74th Avenue and the extension of 65th Street. 61st Street is identical to the situation here. Density in the area for now is, the Quail Valley Golf Course is zero density. The proposed Quail Ridge is one unit and five acres, and the A1 zoning around the entire area is also one unit, five acres, and to the south of this, we have the Sexton Ranch, which is limited to zero density. Analysis is that the continuing of 61st and 65th Streets, there are required building bridges over two canals at 74th Avenue for both streets, provides large properties as you go west that are agricultural use. Bridge would be required at the 2nd Avenue for both of these streets also. At this time, there's less need for a dense urban grid system. As I mentioned earlier, the Quail Valley at zero density, the Quail Ridge at one per five units, one unit per five acres, and the Sexton Ranch limited to zero density. Excuse me. As required by the future land use element policy of 14.3, one of the four criteria that must be met before there can be a change to the comprehensive plan, and those are a mistake in the approved plan, number two, an oversight in the approved plan, number three, a substantial change in circumstances, or number four, a swap or configuration of land uses at separate sites. I'd just point out, staff takes these extended roadways very serious, and we must ensure that there is an adequate level of service can be provided. When we extended the grid plan in 2005, we didn't know what was going to happen in this area in terms of development, so we extended the existing grid at that time to protect integrity of the roadway system, so that whatever occurred in the area would be, the roadways would be adequate to handle it. And if, by chance, low-density development was to occur, the roads could be removed. Now, with the lower-density development in this area, it is evident that an urban road grid is not needed. Therefore, there's been a substantial change in circumstances, and this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Therefore, staff supports this request and makes the following recommendation, that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners to approve the subject request and submit to the DCA for review. And I thank you, and if you have any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, I have one.
Gerald?
Is there any compensation for this, this property, we're giving up the right-of-way?
Good evening. I'm Bob Keatingham, Community Development Director. Actually, we're not giving up any right-of-way. As Stephen indicated, these are just lines on the map, so we're deleting lines from a map. We're deleting parts of a proposed roadway grid system, but there's actually no right-of-way to abandon in this case.
But in the future, say something happens at Quail Valley, can we be able to get it back again? Well, this would be definitive, wouldn't it, if we take it and give it up now?
Yeah. Our position is, when these are put in, we know that the current Board of County Commissioners has a policy to protect the integrity of the urban service line, and we knew that they wouldn't change the densities, but we're looking, we have to look out in the future. We don't know what's going to happen. So, we recommended in the Board approve this extended grid system, but since then, there have been incremental changes. Quail Valley, for all practical purposes, I think, is there for the duration.
Didn't Quail Valley have to accept the 65th Avenue in some form or fashion, and we require that they accept the possibility for 20 or 30 years from their period of time?
We did. We negotiated option agreements with them whereby if we needed to, we could buy the right-of-way through their golf course.
They built it and not expecting it to ever come through.
Right.
Anyway.
Well, yeah.
We're giving this up totally now.
Right. We're giving it up totally, I think, for a reason. First of all, Quail Valley, I think, is there for the duration. It's a pretty significant golf course. It's got an elite membership, I think. It's, I don't think it's a temporary use or holding use. When Quail Ridge came in, it is coming in at the low densities that don't need a real densified grid network, so that was kind of another nail in the coffin of these roadways. But the, one of the other aspects that Stephen didn't show on the slide, when we looked at this closer, that we didn't do when we put in the extended grid network, there's a pretty significant wetlands area on the west side of 90th Avenue, east of I-95. So, if this road, if 65th or 61st got extended west, this is on the Anson property that was recently annexed into the city of Felsmere, I'm sure that when they develop that, they're going to have to try to avoid that area where these roads would be extended. So, when you really look at it, in this corridor, there's little need for these roads on the extended grid system, or at least that's our conclusion here, and we looked at it pretty closely. We do not take lightly eliminating roads from the grid system and...
But why would you do it, then? I mean, I really don't understand. What benefit is it to give up this opportunity?
The, there are some benefits with the Quail Ridge project. They're coming in, they're looking at doing some integrated conservation areas, some set-aside areas, and this would frag, one thing it would do would be fragment their conservation areas. Another, it would...
How would it do that?
Well, it would put a road through areas that...
And it's just the option to put the road. It doesn't necessarily, you need to put the road there, right? I mean, it's just, it's the future that you could utilize.
Right, but, but what we're talking about here, it would significant, it would require them to design their project completely differently because they would have to plan for the eventuality of it. With Quail Valley, it's one thing, it was just a golf course. Here, we're talking houses and neighborhoods and people, conservation areas, sets of sides, and things like that.
So, could we see that plan for Quail Ridge, then? I mean, so that we'd have some idea that was going to go through? I mean, do you have a plan?
Stan Bowling, Planning Director. The AGPD for that project is actually kind of, their design is dependent upon, at this point, they want to see if these segments can be deleted from the thoroughfare plan, so they can design the conservation areas the way that they have proposed to staff at this point in time.
So, in a sense, we are getting something back. We're getting more conservation area, guaranteed.
Well, I think for that particular project, it will allow for that to happen on that site, but it's not guaranteed, no.
So, I would think that we would kind of have a look at that before we would make this...
Well, you can't do rezonings. It's called spot rezoning. You can't legally do that. You can't say, "I'll rezone this if you do that." That's not...
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe this is a rezoning. This is a comp plan change, and I think our project would not seek a rezoning.
No, because it's an AGPD.
It's an AGPD.
Well, I think from a practical standpoint, you know, we probably, if we were going to use this or develop it, we should have put them in place when we drew the line on the paper. When we gave it up with Quail Valley, even though it was an option, if you consider these lines extended out to I-95, they kind of head out to nowhere anyway. There's some key roads, Lord knows, we need more roads built around here in some places, but I mean, they're key roads that are probably more important, especially like he was designing over the canals. I think you'd be happier with this. Where is Hammond's Wetland? Where is the gun club? In this straight through one of these roads as well? Doesn't it go out with the, anywhere, does this go right, almost right through the gun club? Or am I too far?
No, that's about the area. That's right.
It's around 61st, isn't it?
I think that you're going to have to, you're going to tend to end up funneling traffic toward where they can go on and off of 95, but they're each, I have an opinion on their own. Anybody else got any questions of staff?
I have a question, George. Thank you. Bob, given that this, that these two roads would go right through a golf course, and they lead to the west to an area of wetlands where obviously there would be a lot of environmental concerns if those roads were to ever be considered, what is, what are the, what is the loss? I mean, I don't, I don't under, it seems to me that this is something that we can give up without, without loss. What will be the possible future cause of the need for those roads?
That's actually our point. We feel that it's appropriate to delete them. Now, that's not to say the entire extended grid system can be deleted, because there are possibilities in other areas. We could have a new town out there under our current plan, or something could happen that the density could be increased. Our position was, if, say, Felsmere annexed the property to the west, if they had annexed this property and we got, say, traditional development out there, you would need a more dense roadway grid, and really, what we were doing is, we were trying to prepare for any eventuality, and we're looking at that, and your point is exactly right, that in this corridor here with Quail Valley, Quail Ridge, the wetlands, there's really not much land left to create the demand for those roads. The other thing is, 69th is, right now, it's the only road north of 26th Street that goes, that goes out to 82nd, and that's, we know that's going to be a major road, and then the next one down, which is a good road, is 57th. 57th is going to go right into the middle, new middle school. So, if you do have development out there, that's probably going to be the middle school that the kids go to, and it's good to have that. The rest of the extended grid, we want to keep the integrity of it. We see the need for it. In this corridor, I think the situation lends itself to deleting these roads.
And if we fail to approve, it would cause a modification of some conservation areas that are currently being planned if this approval goes through.
Yes.
Well, the 61st Street doesn't go through the golf course, right? It goes, it's just the southern border of it, so it doesn't actually go through the golf course. Only the one street does.
But it winds into the environmentally sensitive wetlands area.
Well, my point was simply that we're giving something up, and we're not, I don't think we're getting anything in return. I mean, it's to their advantage, more so than ours, other than with slow development in that area.
I think you're right, except as you noted, we're probably getting better conservation areas since they can get consolidated. They won't have a road through them. And they, the rule really is, if government doesn't need something, government shouldn't require it and really should allow development to occur without those constraints.
If you think about the development, maybe the grid system tends, if you want to look at it that way, tends to enhance development in most cases.
No, I have no problem with that. It's just that we are giving up something that we had.
Except for Quail Ridge, which is, would like a, probably continuity on their property. But I mean, that's, 65th, I think, is no question. 61st, maybe there's a mild question, is whether you would need it from 82nd back into 58th or something later in life, but I mean, it's...
So, tell them that they have to give it back if they don't use it.
Anybody else got any other comments?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
If I may, quickly.
Mr. Glenn?
The county attorney's office respects Community Development's recommendation on this matter. However, the office does have concerns as to whether the rationale presented constitutes a substantial change in circumstances affecting the property. Now, that was based on the three factors of Quail Valley being created, a possible Quail Ridge, and a Sexton Ranch being limited to zero density. Sexton Ranch is quite a bit south of these roads. I've heard additional information, though, in the last few minutes, that Quail Valley does wish to do some type of conservation planning that would benefit from that having this...
Quail Ridge.
Quail Ridge, would have the benefit of set aside conservation land without having these roads there. That is something that I was not aware of, but the county attorney's office does have concerns with this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Does the office have a recommendation?
Well, can I ask, are there legal, are these legal concerns or non-legal concerns?
Well, they are legal concerns, and the fact that our future land use element requires one of four objectives to be met. We've said that number three, the proposed amendment is warranted based on a substantial change in circumstances affecting the subject property, and the rationale was, as I just stated, Quail Ridge proposed, but not yet finished at a, at one unit, five acres. Quail Valley is completed, and Sexton Ranch is completed, but Sexton Ranch is quite a bit south of this proposed roads.
Okay. Any other comments among the commission members or staff, and if not, I'll open it to the public and potentially Quail Ridge, if they have a comment. Public meeting is now opened. Does anybody in the public care to comment? Public meeting's closed. All right. We can continue our discussion or have a motion? It's up to you all, gentlemen.
I move approval, as recommended.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion?
Under discussion.
Under discussion. Any other discussion of the motion?
I have to, the first thing I wrote down when we started this discussion was substantial change, which is a prior, or criteria, and I don't see it as a substantial change. If I did see the plan sitting in front of me where I was going to get some, something back for this, and there were going to be some increases in, significant increases in area for land storage or whatever, I could probably go for this, but as it is, I don't read this as a substantial change qualifying for a substantial change for the land management.
Both roads are individual, or individually, are you looking at...
I'm looking at both. I'm looking at both roads as presented to the staff.
Okay. Any other discussion?
If you want to talk about one road, I'll change.
Well, I have a question now that Craig has brought that up, and how does staff feel about that if we propose the comp plan change after we see the AGPD proposed?
I think we're kind of dealing with a chicken and egg thing here, and the difficulty is a comp plan amendment takes about eight or nine months. This won't be approved until September, October, probably, because it goes to, goes to the Board for a public hearing, goes to DCA, back with an ORC objections, recommendations, comments report. We have to address that, bring it back to the Board, then DCA needs to make a compliance determination. The bottom line is, if we wait, and I don't even know if the applicant can get in before July, and July's the next window, we'd be talking about sometime like this time next year for the comp plan amendment going forward. We had, we've met with the applicants a number of times on Quail Ridge, and we've talked to them, and we thought this was the best way to go, because we really can't bring a plan to you that's inconsistent with the comp plan.
We understand that.
I mean, here's what, here, no, Steve, I'm sorry, I closed public hearing. I asked, son. If we have, if in fact, though, when you think about these roads, that's why I ask about the 65th and 61st. If you've got houses there, which direction are you going to go either way? You'll either go to 69th or back to 57th. This is not really affecting the flow of traffic unless there's heavy development and you're coming off of 82nd, like we would along 58th and 27th or wherever, to go back and forth to 66, like Cherry Lane and all the other roads. I mean, that's the only, when I toyed with this myself, that's the only thought I had. 65th Street has no real purpose unless you truly are going to try and go through that golf club, and I don't believe that's going to happen. 61st Street goes along the south end. The only person that really benefits is Quail Ridge. The golf course has no dog in that fight, but then you have to decide whether it's really worth the effort to go to 57th or which way that you want to go. So, I mean, at worst, you should, you should do away with 65th if you want to keep 61st, but that wasn't their request, so, I mean, if you do anything, I just don't, I don't see a big problem with this, but, you know, that's up to the rest of you all.
Mr. Chairman, if I could speak?
You may.
Thank you. Regarding the process of the PD, as Bob mentioned, it is kind of a chicken and the egg thing, and the timing we were working toward is at the, at the board hearing, if it's transmitted to DCA and there's a final hearing on the thoroughfare plan amendment, to have the AGPD go to that same board meeting so that they could, they could take a look at the final adoption of the thoroughfare plan amendment and the AGPD at the, at the same meeting to try to get those two processes to come together. So, that was the intent in terms of the timing of it.
Okay.
I have a question. Does 61st go through the AGPD, or is it just on the south border of the AGPD?
It goes through. It goes through. The AGPD goes another, I think, quarter mile south to 59th Street.
It actually splits the south end.
That's what I thought.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I do, I do see an advantage for the county myself in that if allowed, there will be more conservation area associated with 61st. So, you know...
Proposed, but not guaranteed. But when we see Quail Ridge, we probably will remember that.
But your, staff has seen the AGPD. You've seen the proposed. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to wait. Steve is about to have a heart attack.
[laughing]
I'll open the public hearing again, Steve.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hamner. I'm Steve Smith, Vera Beach, Florida.
Remember, I'm one of the shorts, you know, my ADV strikes.
Two seconds.
Okay.
I'm the developer there at Quail Ridge, and you all have seen me many times. We're not flipping some property or something like that. We have a plan, Stan, Bob, everyone has seen it on your staff. You can have 20 of your staff people come and tell you what they've seen, but we were told not to show the plan tonight because of the process, okay? I've got 50-plus acres of newly created uplands going right where those two roadways go. 60-plus acres of lakes that will be deeded. All of that land is going to be deeded to permanent conservation with an easement to the county. That's why we did the AGPD comp plan change last year. You're going to see the results of what you passed last year with my development. I give you my word that you're going to have the best doggone development anywhere in this county. Low-density, high-quality, and I promise you, you're going to have uplands, wetlands, and high-quality...
Thank you, Steve.
My point, Mr. Chairman, is...
Since I opened the public hearing, is there anybody else in the public who would like a second shot at speaking? Camera time, anything. Okay. Meeting is closed.
My point, my point is still that it doesn't rise to the level of qualification for a substantial change. I mean, that's a good development and all that sort of stuff, but there are criteria.
Well, Craig, it's going to come through as a PD, and we're going to get to look at that, and we're going to get to make that call.
If it's not a substantial change, it will be probably when it gets out of here.
Yeah.
That's why I'd be careful what you wish for, Steve. All right. Any other meaningful, any other meaningful discussion? If not, we need to vote on the motion.
Call the issue.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
We've got one opposed.
That's it?
Of course.
As opposed.
Okay. Just, just Craig.
Again.
Again. All right. Next item is a little project called Liberty Park. It's a request to rezone approximately 596 acres from A1, agricultural to multi-other changes. So, a planned development, traditional neighborhood design, maintain conceptual plan, development plan, approval for a project to be known as Liberty Park. The overall density at the end of the day proposed is 1.95 units per acre on this property. Mr. McCoy?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Hamner. What I'd like to do is give you a broad overview of the project. You've got 35 pages of detail, so I'm going to try and hit the high points and... You've got 35 pages of detail, so I'm going to try and hit the high points and not give any longer of a presentation than need be. This is a request for rezoning, conceptual plan, conceptual PD approval for Liberty Park development. And if this is approved by the board, there'll be a condition that there be a reverter within seven years. So, if the project doesn't go forward and get built, that this land will revert to its present zoning within seven years.
That's a good start.
With that, I would like to get to the process, and the process is the planning and zoning commission is to consider the PD plan, the conceptual PD plan, and the rezoning request, make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners will then take action, and if the board approves it, it will then come back to you all, the various phases, the preliminary PD phases will come back. And right now, it's proposed for three phases. There could be sub-phases, and you all could see more than the three phases come back to you all in the future. This is a copy of a land use map, and it's a little bit dated, but what it shows is the project location, which the main location for the main site is just south of 85th Street, and it's bisected by 66th Avenue with the majority being west of 66th Avenue. And it shows the four remote sites, and this project is somewhat unique in this county because this is the first time we've actually transferred density from remote sites to another project location. And I'm going to start at the north and go south. This is the Breezy Village site, and it's transferring density into the Liberty Park site. These sites will be phased and have zero density restrictions as the density is used by Liberty Park. The next site to the south is the Indian River Boulevard. It'll be a conservation site, and it's on the east side of Indian River Boulevard. Next site to the south is the 12th Street site, which is just on the east side of 58th Avenue, and then the Highland, Vero Highlands site, which is in the Vero Highlands. These are all contributing density. Again, there'll be density restrictions in all these sites, and they'll be rezoned as part of this action if it's approved. And those will come in in phases. The other item I'd like to talk to you about on this slide is separate, and it's really sort of the big picture issue. This being a land use map, it's a good time to talk about the big picture issues. The, the subject site, or the majority of the subject site, the main site, is outside of the urban service area, but it's bounded on two sites by the urban service area. It's bounded on its east side by the urban service area, and its north side by the urban service area. It's in what we typically consider West Wabasso, and as we look to the north, Sebastian is coming down and touching 510. So, it's an area that's pretty close to Sebastian and Wabasso. The other thing that this map doesn't show, this is an older land use map, is Felsmere has annexed these four sections of land, these four square mile sections. So, actually, Felsmere is at this point right now. So, one of the things that these Ag PDs are intended to do is to create a softer edge. And right now, we've got two fairly high-volume roads, 85th Street and 66th Avenue, and what this will do is put some more of the intense uses closer to those high-volume roads, and then transition back out into what should be the agricultural area or the green area. And that's sort of the bigger picture of what these TNDs and Policy 18 is supposed to do. Point West is the other one that we have in the county, and that serves a similar function going south of State Road 60. Now, I'd like to talk about the main site. The main site is just over 510 acres. About 15% of it's inside the urban service area on the west side of 60, the east side of 66th Avenue, and 85% of it's outside the urban service area on the west side of 66th Avenue. The majority of the property, even the property inside the urban service area to the north is zoned A1 right now. The property to the west is zoned A1. Property south of it is zoned A1. And then, as you get west of, excuse me, east of 66th Avenue, zoned RM3, RS3, and A1 as you come south and around. The applicant's proposing to rezone this to PD TND, which is the designation we give traditional neighborhood developments that are required to go through the PD process. On page four of your staff report, there's a list of all the uses that are proposed, and it's a mixed-use development. There's residential, there's commercial proposed, there are community service uses proposed, such as a fire station that the site they're going to give to the county, that'll be a fire station within the development, and then institutional uses, such as schools and some others, and there's already an elementary school that the applicants donated the site for. To look at an aerial of the subject site, it's by and large mostly citrus, and again, agricultural areas to the west and to the south mostly, with development mostly to the east of it. The, the groves are presently on the site. There's a little bit of environmental area in two spots, one just to the west of 66th Avenue and the other's just to the east of 66th Avenue. The developer's committed to preserving at least the minimum set aside in the county, actually probably more than that, and you'll see those, more details on those with the, with the preliminary plan developments. Next slide I'd like to get to is the Breezy Village. And again, I'm going to go north to south through these remote sites and just talk a little bit about the rezoning aspects initially, and then try and hit the high points there. This is a 40-acre site, and we call it the Breezy Village site. It's just west of Breezy Village Mobile Home Park. Just to the west of that is, are lots within the city of Sebastian. Some of those are built on, some of those are vacant. To the north is the Beach Cove Mobile Home Park. To the south is a vacant wetland area within the city of Sebastian. And this site would be rezoned PD conservation from RM6 residential multifamily, six units breaker, to PD conservation. And the conservation would essentially be the use, and it would have a conservation easement over it. And to look at an aerial of the site, you can see that the site is essentially half uplands, half wetlands, kind of skewed on an angle like this, with the northeast half being uplands and the northwest half being wetlands, and again, transitioning into that wetland site within the city of Sebastian. That would all be conservation area. The applicant would be responsible for removing the exotics within it, but once they got past that, they're also exploring the possibility of using this as a future mitigation site for this, for this area, and they would maintain ownership of this particular piece of property.
And therefore, maintenance?
Yes, correct. The next site I'd like to talk about is the Indian River Boulevard site, and these are actually two sites, two separate parcels. The western parcel is approximately 15 acres, and that's in the county, and it's zoned RM8, and that would be rezoned to PD conservation, would also have a conservation easement over it. And while it's RM8, the applicant and the staff have agreed to treat it as though it's estering wetlands, so for the purposes of transferring density, it's transferred at one unit per acre, and they haven't gone through and actually done an upland survey, but potentially there could be more to transfer if they went through the upland survey and found that there were uplands on the site. So, we've taken the most conservative approach at the one unit per acre as far as transferring the density there. The parcel in the city is zoned R1 AAA, and we're not rezoning that because the county can't rezone property within the city. They are placing a conservation easement over it, and again, restricting the density to zero density. They're transferring the density to the site, and the applicant is proposing to potentially make this also a mitigation bank, again, because it would be a wetland mitigation bank, estering wetland mitigation bank. To the south of the subject site, you can see that there's been a development, residential development project approved within the city, and you can see where those sort of uplands islands are as opposed to the wetland areas. To the north is actually a mitigation bank that's already been approved, and to the west across Indian River Boulevard is our medical mode. The, the next site is the 12th Street site, and the zoning to the north is RS3. The zoning to the east is agricultural. The zoning to the south is RS3, and across 58th Avenue is outside the urban service area, and the zoning is A1. The zoning on this property is actually A1 presently. It's got an L1 land use, so it transfers density at three units per acre. And the applicant's looking at making this some sort of park or community service use. So, the zoning that is going to, it's going from A1 to PD and a district, again, that's spelled out near backup that allows for parks and community services. The, the site's essentially an old grove, and that grove's been cleared, so it's just still got the furrows there. And you can see the site to the east is a shrimp farm, and you can see the, the greenhouses essentially, the Church of God, First Church of God is to, to the west across 66th Avenue. To the south, again, is a grove, a vacant grove, and to the north is an FPNL substation, and then the Oaks of Vero is a residential development just to the north of that. And we're looking for some, some minor improvements to this site prior to coming to the county for a park use, and that would be a driveway to serve the site that would essentially line up with the FPNL site, and then filling and grading the site to a usable level such that it would be usable when, when somebody went in there and wanted to use it. The last remote site is the Vero Beach Highlands site, and it's a 10-acre site down in Vero Beach Highlands, and all the property around it is zoned RS6, and this is, as is the subject site, and they're proposing to rezone it from RS6 to PD recreation. And the developer is committed to building recreation improvements on this site with phase three of the Liberty Park development. The ownership will remain with the Vero Beach Highlands Property Owners Association, and they'll be the entity responsible for maintenance, and there'll be, again, a zero density restriction. That's the interest that the developer is essentially buying from the Vero Beach Highlands is that density restriction on it and keeping it recreation. This aerial shows the location pretty well, and as you can see, there's a lot of residential development around the site to potentially benefit from those recreation improvements once they're constructed. So, that's the proposal, and that's pretty much of the rezoning aspects of it. In the next, I'd like to transition into going over the conceptual plan and some of the elements of the actual development proposal.
George, can I ask a question? No, I was going to say, let's hang on for just a second, John. I think people have a few questions at this point. Okay. Greg?
Of this 85 acres that you are proposing now, and those four sites, currently, how much of those 85 acres can be developed without mitigation?
The Vero Beach Highlands, you can probably develop all of that site with proper permitting. The 12th Street site, again, you can probably develop all of that. These sites, you probably get into a lot of permitting. Again, they're fairly low. You're getting, I think, 20 off, transferring 20 and some 115 off the other. Be hard to say, but you would be into a lot of permitting at that level.
While you're on that, would you go back to that slide? Is there a conservation easement on that now?
There, we have found no record of a conservation easement.
Thank you.
There is a conservation easement on the properties to the north that's in the mitigation bank. I'm not aware of any.
While you're here, we talked about the mitigation bank. If we've already got a conservation easement, and if they're going to give us a conservation easement, why on earth would this become a mitigation bank?
Yeah.
I mean, why would we mitigate other property into here in the future?
That's my question, too. Right. There's potential for environmental improvement, such as a rim connection or flushing and connecting it with the river and things like that, that would enhance its environmental productivity. So, that'd be something that-
Why not ask for that now?
You're good. I was just going to say, I think one of the advantages of having mitigation bank is you get the improvements, and the, the people in charge of maintaining it get a revenue stream to help ensure that it gets maintained. So, that's, that's a positive type of arrangement from that standpoint.
Okay. Well, how, all right, what do we do about the conservation easement that is already on it as, as why we're gaining or not gaining? There is none.
There is no-
You said you could not find one. Is that, I thought you said you could not.
Correct. Correct.
I misunderstood you. Okay.
The other thing I wanted to just point out, while the question is on the, the properties in the county, John, is zoned residential, I mean, multifamily.
Yes.
So, if there were an opportunity to cluster on the uplands, they could do, it would be easier to do that on a multifamily zone.
Correct. You could cluster it, but again, you'd be into some sort of permitting and mitigation depending upon how much-
I mean, the only real question here is if half the property or a third of the property was, had to be mitigated, and we were giving away 20 units, maybe with less hassle, you'd give away 15. So, I mean, I think the question would be is if you add all four of these together, is there a significant reduction in what is being transferred? Are we talking about 10 or 20 units? When you look at the scheme of the whole plan, it may be a minimal amount anyway, but it's, I don't think it's a major number.
Correct. And let me just get to the last parcel and examine it from that standpoint. This is the Breezy Village site, and again, this is zoned RM6. You've got, just eyeballing it on the aerial, probably half of it is wetlands, the southwest half with the northeast half being uplands. Again, it's zoned RM6. Depending upon the marketing and the style of development, you could fit all of the density-
And the other half.
-on the upland half. So, you probably could get the entire yield here, and again, that would be obviously benefited by the market.
What's the total units being transferred on the TDRs? I didn't, I can add them up. I mean, how many, yeah, each pro-
396.
Is it 290? Is that about right?
396.
Oh, 396, okay.
I have 614, but 614 counts-
Includes the one unit per acre out at the 500, right?
It counts the Ryle Park-
Right.
-plan part, so it's the six, I'd have to do the math to subtract from the 614.
Well, these four sites total 396 units.
And I, that, that sounds correct. Again, I'd have to go back and look at the-
And when you talk about-
500 at the other point.
When, I, I know that you, you said that it's zoned RM6, and they could get the six units per acre on this, even avoiding the conservation, what would be the conservation area, but that was the original argument for getting the RM6 zoning on this to begin with, was so that they could do that, so that they could leave the environmentally sensitive area alone and cluster their multifamily.
Well, then, I mean, in essence, we have no gain or loss. We're moving the RM6 out.
Right.
From where else provided, that's acceptable.
Right.
And now, you've got the whole piece of property.
So, the sensitive area was going to stay sensitive and was going to be avoided anyway.
We're not really saving the land. You're not, you're not really hurting the density either elsewhere.
But you are preserving the uplands in this instance, at this location.
Right.
So, any further questions on the zoning end of it?
On the uplands in the Breezy Village aerial there, in the northeast, what is, what is that?
What type of uplands? As I understand it, it's a mix of, it's a real mix of pepper, some upland scrub, and some just transitional. If you look at the Beach Cove to the north, you can see this yellow sand, and you can see that there's actually a lot of relief as it comes down here, one of the few places that we have in this county where you get sort of a big downhill. But it's the same thing on this site. This is wetlands down here, and you've got this big run. So, this area is kind of sandy as I remember it, and again, transitions into the wetland fairly quickly.
Any other-
And what is south of there, then? South of that?
I'm not as familiar with the south. Again, I can just tell from the aerial that this is wet and it kind of, the uplands-
But it's not, it's somebody else's property.
Kind of trickles out here, but-
That's a separate piece of property.
Yes, it is. It's in the city of Sebastian, yes.
The city of Sebastian.
John, you mentioned there would be some transfer to the, community services and park would be one of the transfer sites.
Yes.
On 12th Street.
Yeah, on 12th Street. What constitutes community service? I can understand a park going in there, but what would fit in there for community service?
Could be something like a senior center, a community center, things like that.
Any fire department, school, those are not-
I don't like to-
A fire department, I think it's actually under community services.
Let me just make the point. On the 12th Street site, the portion of the property that can be used for community services is not being used for density transfer. There's five acres-
Essentially, five acres that's available.
Right. Five acres of the 12th Street site is essentially not being counted in the density transfer, and that's the portion of the site that could be used for community services, because we told the, we told the developer that, no, if it's community service use, that, that is not going to transfer development off.
You had answered.
Conservation parks or some other-
Right.
Not, not any, okay.
Right. Someone's not going to put a church on the site and transfer density off or some other community service use. community service use. You know, we'd be taking density off every single piece of property in the county and transferring it. I think what we're looking at and the basic underlying concept that we had is it's a public benefit, it's gonna be passive or active recreation or conservation, something that benefits the public, but it's not going to be a really, a use that generates a lot of activity.
On that point, I just, the five acre portion of that site that could be used for community services would be only a special exception approval for a specific proposal for that use were to receive approval. So it's not, it doesn't become a permitted use, it, again, you're setting up a PD zoning district allowance for that use, but only if they go through the special exception process, if
Another look.
Exactly, if it ever goes forward with that use.
Hang in there, John, we got a couple, we got some more on these little pieces of property.
How big is that 12th Street, the acreage that we see there in the shaded area? How many acres?
It's, I think, I believe it's 18.9 acres.
Well, you are transferring the entire density of 18.9, because it says Ag 1, you've got, you'll be able to rezone to RS3, three units per acre times 18 acres is 56 units, and you're transferring the entire density of 56 units.
Right, the 56, if you add that in and do the math, it gets you to 1,020 units, and it's actually 992, so it's
Is that what you're doing, is allowable versus what they're asking for?
It's backed down, so we're saying, hey, show us that, that five acres isn't counted, so, so at the 992, the requested number of units, it's, it's five acres backed out of that.
Is the school site also backed out of that calculation?
The school site is not backed out, the school site was, and again, the school sites in the agricultural area that is one unit per acre under the TND, they actually have more acreage in the agricultural than they're gonna get to use, so if you were to back out a site, you could back out that site, but we
Because that's 510 acres in that area, roughly.
I think it's the agriculture, it's 510 altogether, both sides of 66th Avenue, the agricultural portion, I think, is 438.
The school site is out of the calculations.
The school site could be backed out and not affect the density.
On the, in the areas of, that were, the TDRs are coming out of, the maintenance, wherever they remain, I assume, and I'm thinking more of the Breezy Village, that the current owner will maintain it, I mean, we're gonna check, and you'll have to keep the exotics out.
That's correct.
Okay.
These would come off the tax rolls, though, right?
What about public access to the property, any of these properties? What, I mean, I know with parks are obvious, so I guess Breezy Village site may be the only one, I'm kind of wondering, what do we do, are we going to have public access? Are we just gonna leave it there for benefit of water accumulation or whatever?
We're not planning to have public access or any formalized public access to it.
Okay.
I don't think anybody would wanna go there. The neighbors may wanna walk, you know, their dogs and stuff there, but I mean, other than, yeah, folks that live in the area.
These properties would come off the tax rolls, though, right?
The properties from the, I won't say they'll come off the tax roll, they'll probably be taxed at a much reduced rate.
And who would be paying that tax?
The owner in the only, Breezy Village is gonna be maintained privately and in private ownership, so the developer would be continuing to pay there. The Vero Beach Highlands, the Property Owners Association already takes care of that, pays whatever taxes there are due there. I can't imagine those taxes are gonna increase or decrease much based on what happens.
Well, my point is, when the homeowners take over this whole development, would they be responsible for the taxes on that property? Because the developer's gonna be out of it, will be turned over to the Homeowners Association, right?
Yeah.
So the Homeowners Association will be liable for those taxes.
And I, I don't know the answer to that.
Maybe we'll ask the applicant that when he gets up here.
We're gonna let the applicant speak?
Any, any other kind of comments on just this part, because I know we've got a long way to go to get into the density and what we've got.
I have one question. Okay. You said that you were gonna phase in the density transfers.
That's correct.
Okay, which ones are you phasing in first? Goes with phase one.
It's
Let's list it in.
It's in the, those are the details that are in the staff report, so let me find that. It's, the Ryle Park is first, and I believe Breezy Village is second.
Ryle Park is the one that's inside the urban service area, which would be logical, you take it first.
And then I believe it's 12th Street and Indian River Boulevard sites, and I believe the last one is the Vero Beach Highlands site.
Do we have any flexibility in rearranging that? I would think that the Indian River site is the one that we consider the crowning jewel here.
The
We'd like to make sure we do get that in the first phase, not in the last phase.
Again, I think that's something that the developer can tell you whether they're amenable to. The reason that it's in the order it's in is strictly just the numbers, because
So we can rearrange the numbers, then, okay.
The Ryle Park is closest in proximity and had essentially the, either the most, first most or second most highest number of units to transfer.
Maybe we'll
We'll take a look at this.
Take a look with the applicant, anything, okay? John, go ahead, we haven't got the traffic yet, Lord.
Right, we're just getting to, actually going over the conceptual plan, we finished the rezoning, and now we're on to the conceptual plan, and this is a view of the overall conceptual PD plan, and this constitutes that 510 acres. And on that 510 acres, the applicant's proposing a park, and this will be a county park dedicated to the county on the property that's east of 66th Avenue, a conservation area, and this is one of the areas that, that there is some significant environmental resources, and then a fire station site at the intersection, which is essentially five acres dedicated to the county for a fire station site. Then on the opposite side of, or west side of 66th Avenue, is the actual development that the applicant's proposing, and that consists of 992 residential units as proposed, a little over 208,000 square feet of commercial. The density works out to just a little under two units per acre, and on the western side, the red area is essentially the commercial that's proposed, close to the intersection, then connected and transitions back to the residential area. As far as the color skill within the residential area, each color you see is a different type of residential unit, and with the, with the proposal, they are laying the development out as a traditional neighborhood design. And what that means is there's some components that are covered in our Objective 18 of our comprehensive plan, and those really form the framework of what is to be a traditional neighborhood design. The development's laid out to meet those, which is a mix of uses, a walkable community, and to be a walkable community, you really need two things, you need to have pedestrians feel safe and have a safe place to walk, and you need a destination for them to get to. And this community does that in providing for a commercial or a recreation center, a school, a band shell, parks, and essentially a good pedestrian plan that I'll go over in a little bit more detail later on. It provides a grid network of streets that distributes traffic fairly evenly, and I'll go over that in a little bit more detail. Provides a street scape to provide an attractive area in which to walk and, yeah. And for the commercial, it provides a building massing plan that, that gives you the feel of, of a little bit more of a downtown rather than just a shopping center type of environment. The next slide I'd like to go to, with all PDs, there are waivers to the billing code, or the, not the billing code, but the zoning district criteria, and this is no different. They've asked for a number of modifications to what would be the zoning code, the A1, the RS3, the RS6, to have nine types of residential units. Now, in your backup, this takes up four pages of charts, and I haven't got into that level of detail and really don't plan to, because it's pretty intricate, but they're planning nine types of residential units with lot sizes ranging from 3,200 to over 14,000 square feet. Setbacks are generally 15 on the front, and the TND homes are usually justified closer to the front setback than in a conventional development. Porches then go within seven feet of the front setback line, and then the side setbacks would be five or 10 feet depending upon the different residential unit constructed, and on the rear would be 20 feet or 14 feet, and that would be backing up to an alley or a lane, and that would be where the garage would be. The townhomes and cityhomes would be the multifamily product types, and those that have a zero-site setback would also have a similar front and rear. The commercial units will be controlled through the site plans and preliminary PD plans, with essentially the lots just being the footprint of the stores, and then they'd have sidewalk criteria, setback, and green area criteria that are required to be in front of those stores, so you've got the pedestrian walkability for those. The other two items that they're looking at modifying to get the traditional neighborhood design are some engineering standards, roadway widths, radii, things like that, those, that's covered in Attachment 10 in your staff report, so you can look at what the standard is for our county for a conventional subdivision and what the applicant's proposing to do. And then also the Wabaso Corridor, again, to, the Wabaso Corridor is geared to a little bit more conventional development, and for the traditional neighborhood design where you have a little bit more of a downtown, they've asked that there be some modifications that you all would approve and you would see come through on the landscape plans for those downtowns, and again, that's covered in your staff report in some detail. Next item I'd like to cover is the phasing, and in Phase 1 is the park, the fire station, 455 residential units, and the commercial. And as part of the commercial, there's a timing condition that restricts no more than 100,000 square feet of commercial area being built until there's a certificate of completion for 200 residential units or lots. And the Phase 1 is in the orange on the screen. Phase 2 consists all of entirely residential development and accessory development, including a band shell and some other recreational amenities, in the blue, and then in the green is Phase 3, which again is all residential with some accessory development.
John, since you're in this phasing, the seven-year reverter clause says that it'll revert back to its normal PD, or state if it isn't, if construction isn't started by, within seven years, what do you call start? I mean, that's pretty broad. There's, do you have a window that says you have to have Phase 1 done?
No, 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 it would be essentially the commencement of construction as defined in our Chapter 914, and that's not earthwork, but actually getting a permit and, you know, getting that first inspection, and that's what it would take.
But does that hold open all three phases at once?
Yes.
If I go out and we put in the first foundation and whatnot, and then things go belly up?
Yes.
They still, someone, they still have the right, I mean, 10 years, 15 years to do these rest of these phases? We never have put a time limit on this?
Correct. Once that, once they start construction, that seven years criteria is met, and it would then take board action for any change. So, say the project stalled after somebody got a foundation in, much like the Turtle Beach Hotel on the Gordon Nutt property there, where now the Disney Resort is, where he did one piling a year for six years.
That's why I asked the question.
The board would have to go back and actively rezone it then, so
That's just too vague for me, I'm giving you a heads up, because I'm gonna talk about that, John.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. The next item I'd like to talk about are the buffering and the pedestrian plan, and within the buffering plan, there'll be a street scape plan, it's part of a traditional neighborhood development, so we'll have street trees and have a pretty intense street scape package as well as a sign package to make sure that things are coordinated and appropriate looking. As far as the buffers go, the, there'll be at least, and the blue line represents that, a 25-foot PD perimeter buffer around, of course, on the west and the south, there'll be a greater green belt setback along those particular boundaries. Along 70th Avenue, it's reduced to a 30-foot buffer, and along 81st Street is the same buffer, that's a 30-foot buffer. Again, around the not included parcels, there's also a 30-foot buffer, and a 30-foot buffer along all these. The, there's a Type B buffer required along 5, 10, and 66th Avenue, where there is commercial, it won't be a six-foot opaque buffer, just because of the commercial nature, there'll be windows into the project, and there's no requirement for a berm, but as with commercial, they'll have the landscape material there, but not necessarily the opaque feature. With that, I'd like to go over the pedestrian plan, and what you see in the red dash lines are eight-foot wide community trails through the system. The community trail does lead to the western boundary, and at that western boundary is a connection to the Sebastian River Greenway, so this will be one of the ways that both residents, and there'll also be a little bit of a grass parking here where non-residents can use that to get, gain access to the Sebastian River Greenway as those improvements progress. The, the blue lines are five-foot sidewalks, and those are shown along the main roads, but there's actually sidewalks along each and every road, so again, that's part of being the walkable community, and the pedestrian system is having those walkable areas. The areas you see in yellow are proposed transit stops, those yellow dots, and those could be for both school bus and other types of transit vehicles. Next, next slide, next item I'd like to get to is the traffic circulation. And I'd like to start by just going over the internal circulation, again, it's, it's a grid system that connects in many places, and you can see the hierarchy of roads with the yellow lines being essentially the lanes, the orange being the local roads, as along with the reds being the local roads, a little bit wider, and the greens being 81st Street, the thoroughfare planned road, 70th Avenue, the extension of Powerline Road coming down through, and then 74th Avenue actually being a thoroughfare planned road as well, coming down through to the southern boundary. And those do form a grid system, and you don't see the roads in white, those are already constructed, so those roads are in, but those also help form that, that grid system. Would like to note that there was a traffic impact analysis conducted for this, was approved, they have the ability to get conditional concurrency for the, for the development at the time, at this time. There, with that traffic impact analysis, it did reveal or indicate a number of improvements, and there are seven of those improvements that are listed in your staff report that are solely site-related, and for example, that would be, say, this right turn lane on 85th Street at 70th Avenue, or this right turn lane at the project entrance. Those will be built at the developer's responsibility with the phase that those entrances are created, and there's seven improvements like that, there's one on 74th, there's a left turn lane on 74th Avenue at 81st, so there's a number of those, and again, all those will be built with the phase that it's constructed within. Then there are eight off-site intersection improvements that are also listed in your staff report, and that's, say, for example, improvements at 85th Street and 58th Avenue, 58th Avenue and 26th Street. Those are a mix of developer responsibility and county responsibility, where the developer may only be responsible for a percentage of some of those intersection improvements. Those intersection improvements will be the subject of a developer's agreement, so if this is approved by the board, the next, one of the next items that would occur is the board would then consider a developer's agreement about who would be responsible for what percentage of these improvements, and would also spill out the timing of those improvements, because right now in the traffic impact analysis, it's, it's tied to a trip threshold as far as when those various improvements need to occur. With that, I would like to get to the dedication and improvements, and, John
Let, yeah, I was gonna say, hang on, let's talk about the intersections and stuff for a second. Put that behind us.
John, how do we know that the county has the money available to be able to do their part of the improvements?
Gee, there you go, being realistic again.
That would be part of the agreement, and for certain of these intersection improvements, they are on our capital improvements program, and we know those, and we have the programmed improvements, and we have and we know those, and we have the programmed improvements, and we have them scheduled. And that's what public works will put together, the ones that we know are scheduled and we know are in our capital improvements program. We know the scope of the improvements, and we know, given the cost today, essentially what they'll cost us, and we should be budgeting for those. There are others out there...
So they're not budgeted now?
Well, some are. That's what I'm saying, some are. Some are in that five-year capital improvements program that are budgeted, some are not. And that's, again, where some of these may fall more heavily on the shoulders of the developer, and that's what will be the subject of that developer's agreement. Because there are some that are not in that scheduled capital improvements program.
There are, I mean, with these eight intersections, there's some bigger, big intersections, and I'm just wondering...
There are.
You know, if we're sure, I mean, I gather Chris can touch on this later, but if we're sure that this is going to cover it, because I mean...
Correct. And if you look at the, let's just step back in time and look at the Grand Harbor project approved in 1985, and it's still going along, still not built, we still have a lot of traffic monitoring conditions about intersections that it's responsible for. So some of these intersection improvements may be fairly distant in the future, again, over the lifespan of the project and the...
How do we do part of this is also, looks like, you know, we have this project going on at the end of 510, where we're supposed to take the road through, I've forgotten its name now, but where the, we straighten out 510 going on to the Sebastian River High School. Part of the traffic count isn't taking into account those improvements at that end of the road, I thought. And those improvements have not been, the developer agreements, are they in place? I mean, are we going to get, is that going to happen? You know, when you go out 510, aren't there, you know how the traffic is headed that way?
Right.
Are you talking about Blue Water Bay at the curb? Yes, we have that right-of-way.
You have the right-of-way, but I mean, wasn't the developer supposed to help and put in the building and do some of the construction ahead of time?
No, no.
And if the developer's not moving ahead, and we're counting on that area on a certain level of traffic, how do we handle that?
I think Chris can explain this, but kind of 510 is under design. It's in three different phases, going from 512, actually, to the Indian River, and I think it's at probably the 60% phase.
Right. Chris Moore, Assistant Public Works Director, the 510 improvements, they are in our five-year plan. They're funded, programmed improvements. From Blue Water Bay, we purchased a little over three acres of right-of-way to make that wide sweeping curve, and we've incorporated that into the 510 design. So that will all be done as part of the county's CIP.
I understand the county's rushing right ahead, but I think if we're going to do stuff like this, we need to make sure these improvements occur on a timely basis. That's the only, you know, as time goes on with projects like this, as you well know, Chris, that's the trailing negative we hear every meeting about traffic.
Right.
Okay.
Well, Chris, while you're up, I understand that there will be a developer's agreement, but this is an agreement to have an agreement. At what point do we have a contract with the developer that says, yes, I am doing those improvements?
Well, I think, right now, in the, we know at what trip threshold each of these off-site improvements are going to be needed. As he comes in with his phasing plan, and we start to see number of units, and I think, John, you had a three-phase plan up there before, but it doesn't matter. But once he comes in with that phasing plan, and we can tie a certain particular number of units, we'll be able to nail down which of these off-site improvements are needed and at which time. Now, he's going to have to enter into a developer's agreement in order to achieve, in order to obtain concurrency, whether it's a prop share agreement, or whether he has to build some of these outright. That's the point in time that we'll nail down the funding and who pays for what.
What happened to the improvements that we had developer agreements on where the projects never got done?
That's what George was telling us.
Where concurrency was counted on those.
Well, at the time that they applied, if the roadway project was within three years, then it was already included in their traffic study as if it were there today, and they received concurrency on that basis. If it was in years four or five, in other words, beyond three years and they get a prop share agreement, they were also vested for concurrency. Now, if they turn out and it falls through and they don't build, then those trips are never added on to the, never added on to the system.
Pre-prop share, where they agree that they would do certain improvements, and that those improvements are now not getting done. How do we...
Have they, I mean, I assume they bonded out, is that...
Well, at one point in time, and I'm thinking of two agreements that come to mind. One was Turtle Creek, and that was one of the first ones that we did, where they promised to build a roadway, 27th Avenue, that was not in our five-year plan, but we relied on a promise pretty much for them to build it. Turtle Creek fell through, or it was delayed heavily, they were never built. So again, those trips were not generated, therefore the roadway was not needed. Since that time, we had another agreement that dovetailed into Turtle Creek's agreement with PNS Properties, and that one also fell through, because at the time, we were changing the de minimis standards, and a lot of their partners fell out of the mix. And then subsequently, the county picked up part of 27th Avenue and put it into our CIP. So we've been following along behind these projects that fail and try and bring these, some of these links into our capital improvement program as they're needed. But that's a year-to-year thing that we evaluate each year when community development brings the CIP forward for the board to consider. We look for projects like that, maybe for developments that have failed, and try and pick up the slack so that we don't get failing links anywhere. It's a complicated process. You'd have to know the history of all these developer agreements, but we do follow along and try and get them in place.
I mean, I have really not a lot of problems with the project at all, but I'm just, we've got a period of time now where good, bad, and different growth has slowed down, and we have a chance to be catching up. And I'm just wondering if, you know, if these links are necessary, if we can get some of this done in a timely fashion so that if it goes ahead, we're ahead of the game.
Well, the ones that they're totally responsible for, they'll be paying for. If they're not in our five-year plan, and the county doesn't have any money for them, they'll have to, they'll have to build those projects. And some of these, I can see US-1 and 45th Street, there's a few in here, US-1 and County Road 512. There is no county money for those projects. So those are two out of the eight right there that they'll have to build.
Well, that, with the phasing in of the projects, is this something that will occur logically with their phase? I mean, we, do we, and Brian probably will come up later and answer this, but is there a distribution of traffic that would affect, so that they may come in at the beginning rather than second or third phase?
During the PD section, we can require it as we wish, because everything's under negotiation.
Well, I think the applicant, when he presented it, he was a little bit reticent about identifying exactly which areas he was going to develop and in what order. So the phasing is a little bit nebulous right now, but when they come in with a building plan, we'll definitely be looking at that, and intersections affected in that area will have to be done first.
So that'll occur at the next level? Rather than conceptually, that occurs later on when we do site plan? When we say what intersections are truly affected, when?
Right, that would occur later.
This is just rezoning, when the PD comes into us, we can do those requirements at that time, right?
That's correct.
Just to satisfy my curiosity, where along is the Barber Street and Schuman intersection improvements?
Well, we've got 66 Avenue and become Schuman after you go north of 510. We've got that in our five-year plan. The intersection is not currently a funded improvement in our five-year plan, just the four-laning of 66 Avenue and likewise Schuman, but not the intersection at Barber.
We were afraid of when we talked about that one.
It's not in a funded improvement yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Brian, you're going to get a chance, just make notes. Hang on. I see you sitting up toward the edge of the chair. It's okay.
But also, to follow up on that, they did not use the fully widened, and I'll let, I should probably let Brian speak, because he was familiar with the analysis.
Why don't we let Brian speak?
But I don't believe he used the, I don't believe he used the full widened intersection in his analysis at Barber and Schuman.
That's correct. We used the existing configuration that's out there today and analyzed it with the project traffic. It has deficiencies, as you can imagine, today without the project, and it's compounded with the additional project traffic added. The project was identified to make improvements at that intersection, which consisted of auxiliary lanes, turning lanes for northbound left turn lanes off of Schuman onto Barber and so forth. And we've identified in the traffic study, Mr. Chairman, what trip triggers each intersection improvement, the ones that are the responsibility of the developer. So specifically at Barber and Schuman, when the project generates 239 trips, then that intersection is a requirement to be improved. And the way that those trips were determined is when that project became significant. We analyzed the entire project, determined what the improvements were, and using the county's significant test for when you analyze them, once that trip threshold was exceeded, then we said, okay, this improvement is warranted.
So what happens, Brian, if the county decides that the intersection is so bad that it's actually going to do some improvements there? Do you take the cost of what the improvements were that you had agreed to do and just pay the county the cash instead of...
I'm just trying to follow you. If the county decides themselves to make improvements prior to...
Faster than the trip.
Faster than you do.
Trip would generate, your minimum threshold would generate.
What we've said also in the traffic study, and we've identified that contingency, we said these five intersections that are the obligation of the developer. If any of these intersections are improved by the county prior to, either improved or added to the five-year CIP plan, we said, here's the capacity that this project consumes, and we've identified a dollar amount that then should be allocated to the intersection. So if the county comes in and blows out the intersection prior to the need of Liberty Park, right now, there's a saying, there's identified in the traffic study that there's a monitoring obligation.
Will it contribute at that point, prior to you having really triggered it yourself in your own project?
Yeah.
That's a good answer.
Okay.
One question about, we're on the Barber Street-Schuman, you, there is a commitment here for you to create the two northwestbound, okay, northbound left turn lanes, okay?
Yes.
Now, but there's no requirement for you to improve the southbound on the opposite direction. I mean, we've got traffic going one way, and you're accommodating that with some lanes, but when the traffic comes back down, you're not accommodating that with any...
Well, there's only one, I mean, as part of this project, what we said that this project would need to do to make that intersection work is dual northbound left turn lanes, and then it would have to be two receiving lanes to accept those lanes. So essentially, the improvements would...
But they want to come home, what happens? I mean, we got them going into town, but now...
Sebastian now has them...
Essentially, there's only one lane feeding it, so there's only need for one receiving lane. I mean, those improvements, the county may evaluate that from a long-term, 30-year window.
Oh, you dealt with, you're not going to build a second, because there is no second lane to receive, that's what you said, you're restricted in what you can do.
Yes. I mean, as far as the improvements that we recommend when we analyze it, we say, what improvement needs to be made to make the intersection meet the county's standard? That's the level that we go to. We don't say, okay, you know, 40 years from now, kind of what the NPO does, they look at the longer-range picture and say, here's ultimately what we need to have, such as 82nd Avenue ultimately needs to be a four-lane divided. I'm not saying 82nd Avenue needs to be, but that's what the long-range planning does. From our perspective, we evaluate the project, and we say, what improvements need to be made at specific roadway segments and intersections to meet the county code? And then these improvements are the ones that are identified in the traffic study.
So why did you not require the right turn lane being added to Barber Street?
For eastbound?
Eastbound and then heading south?
And the reason being is because with the dual left turn lanes and the receiving lanes, that was a sufficient enough improvement to demonstrate that the intersection would operate to an acceptable level of service.
That's when they're headed north, but what about when they're headed back south?
But there's only one, there's only one, there's one lane feeding it, one receiving lane to accept it. So, I mean, I could, if you build two receiving lanes, there's still only one lane of traffic coming into it, and in conjunction with the 66th Avenue improvements, the four-lane improvements are coming up to that southern side of that intersection.
Brian, I think she's looking at the other side of the intersection.
Yeah, north of the Barber?
Yeah, yeah.
North of there.
North of Barber going south.
You're going to be sending a lot of traffic to the north, right up Barber. When that traffic comes back and the rest of the traffic do the growth of the north of there, it's just going to, it's horrible now.
No, we acknowledge that, that the intersection today has deficiencies, with or without this project, it has deficiencies. With this project, the traffic that's being assigned to the intersections, the improvement that needs to be made to demonstrate an acceptable level of service are dual northbound left turn lanes.
Would you consider your responsibility?
I'm sorry?
It's what you consider your responsibility.
Yes. I mean, there may be additional needs because, to improve it, and I mean, that's where we work with staff and figure out what can be made as an overall improvement, you know, join these improvements with other improvements to make it work.
I think this intersection really, based on what I could tell, this intersection may be the only one, I mean, the others looked fine, this one may be in question is all.
Well, this is, and as you can imagine, this is the one that occurs the earliest in the project sequencing. So, yes.
See, Don, our problem is the same. He's not admitting that his project is causing part of the problem.
We know there's a problem there.
We'll negotiate that.
I'm fully admitting that this project assigns traffic to that intersection.
He's talking about the intersection and...
Okay. So let's say you're driving south on Barber Street, and you come around in front of TLC, and you're at the intersection, headed, you're headed east on Barber.
Okay, yes.
Now, you're going to go south on 66th.
Yes.
Okay. You sent traffic up into the city in two lanes, you're bringing traffic back down south in one lane. There's only one lane right now for straight ahead and right turn.
Thank you.
So we need an additional right turn lane so you can head from Barber Street south onto 66th.
I hear you. That's what we're both pulling on.
Yeah, I hear you, and I'm not arguing that the turn movement's high, I'm just saying that to demonstrate an acceptable level of service for that intersection, to meet the county's code, here's the improvement that's made, that needs to be made for this project to move forward.
You might want to file this one away, though, Brian.
You're going to have...
They want to think about this maybe, Brian?
We're going to have this conversation again, Brian.
Thank you.
We don't know, I don't think we need to whip the horse right now, we got the idea. But, okay, any other questions of Brian or Chris while we're kind of dealing with roadways and intersections?
I won't be far.
No, Brian, yeah, stay on the edge of your seat, Brian.
John, tell me why this didn't qualify as a...
DRI?
DRI.
Yes. Early in, well, not that early, because the projects, I think, have been going on three or four years now, so...
For those of you who don't know, DRI is Development of Regional Impact, which would have to go to Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council.
And they looked at it and turned it, they said it was not necessary.
Correct. And with multiple or mixed-use projects, there's two tests that they do, and they test the thresholds and they have a calculation. We had the applicant go down to Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, give them the information. The Treasure Coast ran those calculations and sent us back a correspondence saying that this is not, didn't trip the thresholds, that they're under the thresholds, as I remember, by about 5% to 6%.
Yeah, I'd be, that'd be close. I was on that for four years. I just can't believe this didn't trip the threshold.
I mean, if they, good, bad, and different, if they've said it doesn't trip it, I mean, I'm not sure one of us can say, go back and trip it.
No, we can't.
I mean, they like to, but I don't think we can do that.
It didn't trip it.
Okay, John?
I have a question.
Sorry.
The Rydell Park there, you expect a lot of pedestrian traffic in there. Is there going to be a crosswalk, a walk across 66th Avenue there or anything? How will the people access it from this development to that park, besides having that little bit of parking space to drive to that park? Going across 66th Avenue there?
Right. The place to cross is actually going to be, there'll be a crosswalk, there's already a school and there's a signal, and the place to cross is going to be, for a protected crosswalk, is going to be at the intersection with the traffic signal.
Well, what about that red line right there going across?
That'll be to come down.
That's one of the...
Traffic engineering will only allow a protected crosswalk here if there's a stop condition on 81st...
That's to be a four-lane road.
Right. So I'm saying that this most likely will not be an approved crosswalk at this location, but it'll be approved at the southern entrance with the, with the signal.
And there'll be sidewalks along that edge of the road there to get into that?
Yes. There'll be sidewalks along both of those segments, along 81st Street.
It'll be an interesting crossing.
For pedestrians, and it's, the intent is the whole area to be pedestrian-friendly.
Correct.
But to access that park may be a little difficult.
450 to get across, Lord.
New game, Liberty Park instead of Frogger. John, where are we? Go ahead.
We are close to the completion of my presentation. That's where we're at. And as far as dedication improvements, I've listed three out here, and essentially, the applicant... And essentially, the applicant has already given the school site to the school board.
Ronnie.
The school's been constructed. They also helped with drainage and landscaping upgrades and some other upgrades to the site. So they've also donated cash for that particular deal. The applicant's also dedicated right-of-way already for 81st Street, and that's why that right-turn lane was constructed at 81st, the westbound to southbound on the 66th Avenue. So that was a dedication already from the applicant. They've coordinated with engineering and they're going to dedicate additional right-of-way to fulfill the thoroughfare plan right-of-way for 81st Street, for 66th Avenue, for 70th Avenue, and 81st Street as it goes through. They'll also be responsible for paving 70th Avenue, 74th Avenue, and 81st Street with their project. As far as public benefits, and we ask all developers of PDs to provide public benefits to the county to show above and beyond what a normal development would do. And this is essentially a list of those. Again, I've explained the school site, the county park, which is Ryo Park, and they're going to actually do improvements in that in the second phase. They'll dedicate it in the first phase, do the improvements in the second phase. The 12th Street Public Use Site, and again, that'll be dedicated to the county. The Vero Beach Highlands Park, which they'll do the improvements for, that'll be owned by the Vero Beach Highlands Property Owners Association. The Indian River Boulevard Conservation Area, the Breezy Village, the Emergency Services Site at the southeast corner of 81st Street and 66th Avenue. The right-of-way dedications are all without compensation, so those are public benefits. The street dedications, the streets in the development, many of them will be privately maintained, but they'll all be open to the public. One of the items I haven't spoke about also is the Douglas subdivision, which is a subdivision just to the east of Ryo Park, the proposed Ryo Park. And the applicant will be doing drainage improvements. Essentially, that area has got some drainage problems, but they'll connect that to the stormwater system within the park, providing some drainage improvements there. They'll also do pedestrian improvements, getting folks from the Douglas subdivision to Ryo Park. They'll also build an off-site sidewalk for that same neighborhood. When I say off-site, it'll go from essentially 64th Avenue on the south side of 510 down to 66th Avenue, giving folks a safe place to walk on the south side of 81st Street.
81st Street.
And then they'll extend the county road grid system with the 81st extension and the 74th Avenue extension. With that, I would like to get to the recommendation. Staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the rezoning and conceptual PD plan for Liberty Park with the conditions that we've outlined in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other questions for staff? We kind of walked through this, but if you've got any more of staff. If not, I think, let me take a slide. Don.
Okay. Under the comp plan, it says that the land shall be under unified control. Now, I know we've got a POA or an HOA controlling the Vero Highlands site. How do you satisfy those requirements under that condition?
The unified control comes in the rezoning and it comes in with the, essentially, the POA sort of joining in as a partner in the development application for that particular aspect of it.
That doesn't quite hold water for me.
If I could just maybe add to that, we have, you have different developer interests in some of the larger projects in DRIs. It's not unusual to have that, you know, even in a project the size of Point West, you may have different developers. What you have is control over one conceptual plan. And in this case, rezoning. In other words, the remote sites, day one, if this rezoning and PD is approved, those sites get rezoned to zero density. And that controls in a unified way through a rezoning action as well as a conceptual plan. But you can have different interests within a large project that own different parts of it, but they're all subject to the same conceptual PD plan.
But, I mean, what we're approving tonight is the rezoning, which is tying down the density and tying down the types of uses that'll be available in this project.
And it's a conceptual plan, too, a conceptual PD plan, too.
But if they start Phase One, Phase Two, for instance, and they start off with, I'll say, medium-sized homes, and they're selling very well, and even though Phase Two, the second phase is smaller, maybe even close to zero lot lines, some of the smaller lots that they have, but they want to change, stay with the medium-sized homes, they can do that, if they don't change their density, right?
Right.
Or modifying a site plan later, not without change, because we changed.
Right. There are some changes that a PD project can do that doesn't require them to come back through the conceptual level, but you all will be seeing every preliminary PD plan, every site plan, every subdivision part of it. And you're correct, they may go under, or, I didn't finish this, I didn't mean financially.
Don't kid yourself. These guys are in the sales business and building business, and I've seen projects where they change their, want to change their product because that is what is selling, not something they had previously planned.
I was going to say, they may go under the density that they, the maximum that they have there, and may go with larger lot product, and that would not necessarily trigger, you know, the public hearing process because it's going to be less intense. But you all would still see the site plan for that phase. But, you know, this is a large project, it's probably going to take place over a long period of time, like Point West is, and you'd expect, you know, Sea Oaks is pretty large, Grand Harbor certainly is, taking a long time. And there may be times when they come in and come back through the public hearing process because, you know, they'll be modifying, but it'll be a public hearing process. Windsor has come back, Indian River Club has come back, Point West has come back. So, you know, it could very well happen.
I have one more question of John before we hand this over. And John, I talked about this today, and I want him to actually publicly explain this. In our land development regulations, under density and PDs, it says that no density transfer or density bonus can be applied to any residential development of a site or portion of a site designated as ag on the comprehensive land use map. And we know we have 430 acres in here outside the urban service area that is designated as ag on the land use map. So how do we get past that land development regulation that says we can't do that?
Yes, actually, a little over 430 acres. And that is in the Plan Development Section as far as not transferring density to the A1 district. And with the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan supersedes or overrides the land development regulations. And in this particular case, the policy 18.3 is the one exception to that particular code section that actually encourages density to be transferred to agricultural receiving sites, specifically to encourage traditional neighborhood developments, and that's the only time that it's allowed.
Good escape clause.
This kind of brings to light the fact that we have no LDRs for traditional neighborhood designs, and is this something that you think we should be starting to look at in the near future?
Correct. We've relied on the provisions of Objective 18, 18.1, 18.2, and 18.3 to implement traditional neighborhood designs as far as agriculture, but yes.
That in fact that they've been PDs, which generally we have a lot of say-so and control over.
Correct. But Ms. Keys is correct, we really should have the implementing legislation to provide the details in that particular respect.
Thank you.
That brings me to my question. Land use objective 18, 10% of new residential development will be of the traditional neighborhood design, 10% a year or 10% within that period of time, between January 1st, 1998 and 2010? How does that work?
The way I read that is 10% of the units approved in that given time period.
For the count, of that 10-year period of time.
And that's where it's trying to, this policy's trying to encourage that and get to that 10% level.
Actually, John, this is an objective. And an objective is an end that we're trying to attain. The bottom line here is, I think, that the county acknowledges that traditional neighborhood design is a real good way to build. It's got a lot of advantages, John went over a lot, and that what we would like to see, what would be really great, is if 10% of all the units built in that timeframe, from 1998 to 2010, were TND. That's the, I hate to say goal, because these have certain definitions in planning, but an objective is an end that we're trying to meet, we're trying to get there.
This meets that threshold now, the 10%, that 10-year timeframe.
It would help us achieve it, but again, these units aren't going to be built in that 10-year timeframe, they're going to be stretched out over a long period.
Can somebody else come in next year and also put in a traditional neighborhood design?
Correct. The 10% is the minimum we're trying to achieve, it's not a cap.
Right. It would be great if we could get 100%.
Okay.
What we're saying is maybe it's achievable to get 10%.
This is like our second date in 10 years.
That is the-
Not too many.
That is the planning department's opinion.
I mean, theoretically, we could have another one of these right next to this.
Yes.
Anywhere you're along the urban service line, as long as you touch the line or within a mile.
Portion of it.
Touch along.
You have to touch the line, correct.
It needs to be contiguous.
So you call this a new town design, then?
Actually, this is different from the new town. The design would be, the design of this would be very similar to a new town, but a new town would have a lot more green belts around it. The, our new towns have to have a minimum of 1,200 acres, and the developed part of it has to be a small part of that. So the difference between this and a new town is really, the new town will have much more green belt in either agriculture or natural areas.
So this is more sprawl, then?
No, this is, no, this is not sprawl, because both the new town and the TND are designed to not be sprawl. As John said, they're mixed-use, they get a grid system, they're walkable.
And then, we had a visioning session, what, a year ago or so? We went through a visioning process?
Yes.
And after all that was done, the consensus of everybody in the county was pretty much we didn't want to have any new towns, right?
I think the consensus was, they didn't want new towns out-
Outside the urban service area, right?
Because, yeah, because of the density increase.
Right.
That, well, that was the final result.
I think we're talking about two different things because of them. A new town is much larger than this.
Right. And one, another distinction of the new towns is they're supposed to be removed from any existing development. They're supposed to be, say, 10 miles out away from-
Well, I mean, this is removed, isn't it?
It's not removed in that, it's very close to Sebastian, West Wabasso, and pretty soon Felsmer.
Right in the middle.
Pretty soon.
Okay, we-
It's at two boundaries of the urban service area.
We're supposed to take a five.
Points all well taken, but I think we, what we need to do now is, unless you have more questions of staff, is let the applicant make his presentation, and we'll maybe ask questions of the applicant then. After that, is a public hearing that will be open, and depending on time, we probably will take a break in between the public here, the beginning and the, after the applicant, and then come back and have the public hearing. If we can move on along. Mr. Kennedy?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, for the record, Andrew Kennedy, 3001 Ocean Drive, and I am with PNS Properties, who is a development consultant on the Liberty Park project. We are very excited to be here before you this evening, and thank you for your time. It has been in the works for approximately four years or so. PNS has been involved approximately a year. I wanted to just start off by thanking staff, Bob Keating, Stan Balling, John McCoy, in particular, Jeannie Brissette, Chris Mora, Joe Baird, and everybody else who's touched this project, because it's been quite a few people, a lot of hours, and it's been a rewarding experience to get to this point. I want to introduce the development team. I didn't get to introduce Brian Good, but he's the traffic engineer. Kerry Godwin of Godwin Associates is the land planner and architect, as well as Todd Bonnet. They came up with the original design, and we'll take you through that. We do have a presentation for you this evening. Joe Shulkey of Shulkey, Biddle and Stotter is the civil engineer, for any questions that you may have in that regard. Stephanie Silvila is of Biotech Consulting, and she is our environmental engineer. And then finally, PNS Properties, myself, Brian Curley, who will be talking about public benefit in the presentation, Donald Proctor, and Ronald Hessler, all have been involved in the project. I did want to say that PNS jumped at the opportunity to get involved in this project. And there's a multitude of reasons, but I'll keep it brief. One is that it is a local project. It's local partners, principals, local folks who are employers in the local community, philanthropists, so, and I for one think that's a very important part of this particular project. Really, the success has already begun, and the school, Liberty Magnet School, is a fantastic, if you haven't seen it or toured it, Principal Claus is here, he's, you should, it's very worthwhile to do it. It's fantastic. And as you look into the future, you can see the land, the design coupled with that school, and, you know, if you have a creative mind, you can see it down the road. The design itself is new urbanism, and it is, obviously, it's incented in 8.1, or, excuse me, 18.1 in the comp plan, and, you know, we're obviously taking advantage of opportunity there. And basically, overall, the public-private partnership, working with staff, working with the school board, coming up with, you know, donating the land, et cetera, and that'll be mentioned more in our presentation. At this point, I'd like to introduce the presentation. I'll then come up and conclude, and then we can answer, the development team can answer any questions that you may have. So with that in mind, Todd and Kerry will go through that.
Good evening. My name is Kerry Godwin of Godwin and Associates, and I've already turned in my other criteria to the clerk. I've been working on TND communities for the past 10 to 12 years, several of them have been of national prominence. And I have to say that this plan is one of the most exciting and has turned out to really be, I think, something that the county can be proud of. I want to express our appreciation to county staff. As tough as your questions have been to staff tonight on the early part of the presentation, we've been going through those same questionings from staff for the last three or four years. And I have to say, during that process, the plan has changed and it's gotten better at every point. So we're really proud to present this plan to you tonight. One of the things, some of the conversation was, why a TND? And I think one of the things that a TND, unlike a contemporary suburban development, a typical house has all the living areas focused on the rear of the house, focused on a pool, surrounded by a six-foot fence. And you never see your neighbors until you carry the garbage can out at night, and you never get to know anyone. The whole purpose of a TND is to change the lifestyle, and not everybody wants it, and it may not be 100%, but it is a great way of living and a different thing to look at. And it's a whole different focus on more of a community lifestyle, where instead of you're segregated in your own backyard and never know your neighbors unless you hear them over the fence, you may be sitting on your front porch, and maybe walking your dog, or playing with your kids down in the park, or your grandkids down in the park, and doing those kind of things, where it's more of a community spirit involved. And it's a real difference in lifestyle and real attractive for those people that are looking for those kind of things. There's several design standards that we set out going for. Number one, we had to meet the county criteria, but there are three standards I'd like to talk about, and one is a sense of place. You'll have to forgive me, I have a hard time explaining a plan without pointing, my laser pointer doesn't work on your screen. But one of the things, if you look at the northeast corner, is the town center. And instead of a typical commercial center with a big sign and a parking lot out there, instead, there's a water feature there with a fountain, there's going to be a gazebo there, and then you have storefronts facing the street with own-street parking, and the mass parking is behind the buildings hidden from the roadways. So that starts to create a sense of place for the community as a whole. And then if you look at each of the little neighborhood clusters within the community, And then if you look at each of the little neighborhood clusters within the community, all of them are focused around a public space. There's either a water feature, or there's a small neighborhood park, so everyone within a small neighborhood can walk to that park, and that becomes their outdoor living room for that neighborhood. And they're all connected by sidewalks, so you can go, you can easily go visit, if your kids are in the school there, and they have friends in another neighborhood, they can easily go from neighborhood to neighborhood. You're not going down a cul-de-sac, out to a main road, down to another project entry and back in. And so the whole interconnection starts to take place. The other thing that happens, John mentioned some of the various housing styles, we have nine different homesite sizes. With those, hopefully with the, there'll be different-sized homes, and therefore different pricing, and if you look at it, each little cluster, there are four or five different house site sizes in there. So there's not just one type of house that gets repeated where it has three elevations, and everything starts to look the same. These are the neighborhoods are broken up, so there's some interest there, architectural interest into the units. The other thing he mentioned was the rear lane access. Overwhelming majority of the homes have rear garages, so the garage doors are not on the front elevations, they're behind the house, and all the driveways are at least 20 feet. So you have plenty of room of parking off the rear lanes and not out front and blocking traffic. The other thing that will happen with this TND, and county staff has looked at it and required it, is there will be architectural standards. So there will be architectural diversity, there'll probably be three to five different architectural styles introduced, and it will be carried out on all the different homesite sizes. So again, there's a lot of diversity in the streetscape as you start to drive through. So with that diversity of housing, the third thing I wanted to talk about was the mixed use that was mentioned. And the town center will be either office or commercial on the first floor with residential above it. Next to it is the town home cluster that transitions back into the single-family area, and that could be some live-work units. And then again, there are town homes that are backed by the community center. So again, there's a different type of housing styles that start to take place throughout the community. And now I'll turn it over to Todd Bonnet.
Thank you. My name's Todd Bonnet with the Bonnet Design Group. We've been working on this project for, as I mentioned, three or four years, and have been kind of the principal designers throughout. And I'm going to go through this fairly briefly, because John did a pretty excellent job of kind of sticking my thunder on a lot of the material I was going to cover. But the project was really based around that walkability standpoint, and creating a pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. And really, what that, the beginning of that was establishing discernible centers and destinations where people could walk. One of those has been mentioned is a village center. The other is a community clubhouse and kind of amenity center in the center. But in addition to all that, we wanted to create that network of those walkable streets, with tree-lined streets creating shade, traffic calming, and not only a sense of comfort, but a sense of safety on the streets as well. The connectivity has been mentioned as well, and John did a good job kind of walking through that, showing that connectivity and the different hierarchy of roadways. Moving on to the next one. Again, the elementary school, which has been mentioned, is already built and occupied with its first class, but that really starts to establish the sense of community, which is, you know, sometimes a lot of communities, you know, take a couple of years to kind of start to generate that. This has an already-built-in destination, it's there, it's vibrant, it's operating, and is essential to that establishment of that sense of community. The village center, which occupies that really prime area up at 510 and 66, is that other real-choice destination within the community, but it not only is there to serve the residents of Liberty Park, but also starts to provide those daily destinations and trips, and the daily services for the residents of northern Indian River County, as well as the Wabasso area. The Ban Shell is the area just to the kind of southeast, or southwest rather, of Village Center. And it was really designed on a grand scale to accommodate, you know, different concerts or art festivals, and kind of provides a linkage as well, because the elementary school is just to the, in that slide, to the right side of the canal, but it provides that kind of cultural or civic use kind of connection, or green belt through that part of the project. And also is that kind of connection between the residential parcels to the further west and the Village Center, kind of help bridge that gap a little bit. Go ahead. And finally, the green space, you know, we wanted to kind of illustrate, you know, all of the green space, over, I think it's 34, 35 percent of the project is open space, which is in excess of kind of everything required, but it was just kind of evolved that way through the different renditions of the plan, and really worked out pretty well. And a critical element of that, I mean, you can see a lot of the big green spots, but I think what is of equal importance is the smaller little green areas within each of the villages, because that really starts to create a one-to-two-minute walk for anyone from almost every residence within Liberty Park, is that within, you know, a minute or two walk, they can get to a little village park, a little pocket park, that starts to become a center for that smaller village within the community, and also starts to provide a little bit of a sense of identity for it as well. I believe Brian's going to go through some of the additional public benefits as well. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Brian Curley. I'm with PNS Properties. I don't want to reiterate too much, but staff said they did an excellent report, but I'll try to go through the benefits to Wabasso and the county. First off, we've spoken a lot about the donations of land and improvements. Staff has already spoken about the school site, the fire EMS, the parks in the conversation, and the conservation area, excuse me. And I'll go into a little more detail on these as we move along. You know, a highlighted donation people have spoken about already is the Liberty Magnet School. I've taken a tour, it's absolutely fantastic facility, and it's been an excellent example of a private-public partnership for mutual benefit. The Riel Group has already donated land improvements and will continue ongoing maintenance there, as staff has spoken about previously. The infrastructure improvements, you know, you guys have gone through in a lot of detail, I'll kind of gloss over this one, but, you know, as many of these intersections are part of the five-year CIP, you know, this developer will be working closely with the county to make sure that these things go along smoothly. But to highlight some of the infrastructure benefits, here at, highlight right there, on County Road 510 from 66th Avenue to 62nd, the developers will be adding a sidewalk to connect the existing Wabasso community to the Liberty Park development. Now, within walking distance of the Wabasso community, there's going to be shopping, recreation, employment opportunities, and we want to stress that we're going to connect with infrastructure to the neighboring areas. In addition, we're going to be connecting the Riel Park to the Douglas subdivision. You know, there's going to be other added benefits there as well, including some drainage improvements for that subdivision, which I'll get into in a little bit. Just a, this is just a high level of list of much of the benefits to the community. On the left, there's a lot of the recreational benefits. Now, what I want to stress is this is all open to anybody in the public. There's 40 miles of walking paths. Anybody can drive into this development and make use of these paths. Nearby, people with their bikes can ride them into the development and make use of the 10 miles of biking paths. Not to mention these other benefits as well. On the right side, there's also a lot of these sites that have been donated and approved, such as, you know, you talk about the EMS fire station, it'll improve response time for all the neighboring communities, as well as Liberty Park. And something I really want to highlight is employment opportunities. I went to the state of the county recently and saw that the unemployment is up for the county, and the development of this Liberty Park will definitely help alleviate that problem. Just getting a little more detail, Riel Park, this is going to be one of the largest parks in the county. It's got walking paths and jogging paths for adults, playgrounds for families with kids, and as we mentioned earlier, there's the infrastructure benefits, the pond there will be able to be used for retention for 510 and 66th Avenue, as well as alleviate the drainage issues at Douglas subdivision. And just to quantify this a little bit, 250 acres will be dedicated back to the county in the form of right-of-way parks, conservation areas, and land for the public buildings. In addition, about that, in the numbers-wise, is going to be nearly $37 million, when we're talking about the value of those dedications, and also the impact fees will be paid. At this point, I'd like to turn it back to Andrew Kennedy.
Almost there, Mr. Chairman. Just one last quote, and that is from the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, and I know, all of you know who that is, but for the benefit of the public, it is a not-for-profit forum created by and for local government. It provides planning and technical assistance for Florida's growth management programs, and probably most importantly, it's a nationally-recognized leader in community education with regards to urban design programs. They did, as was alluded to earlier, review this project, Liberty Park, and Michael Bush is the executive director, and his staff had the following criteria. Quote, "Liberty Park depicts a town that consists of a clear network of neighborhoods, connected by a well-designed, integrated, and appropriately scaled network of streets." And it is a little redundant, but because it's the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, I wanted to say it. "The mix of uses provided are correctly distributed throughout the town to allow future residents easy access to services, recreation, education, and jobs, all within walking distance. There is a clear network of greens, public open spaces, and preserve areas. Furthermore, the water management is dealt with in a comprehensive manner that is far more effective than conventional isolated drainage ponds. A clear mix and integration of building types is incorporated. The current project presents a great opportunity that organizes new development in a way that addresses key regional issues and mitigates regional impacts. The county and the developers should be commended for such an outstanding proposal." That has been submitted for public record previously, but I just wanted to reiterate. So thank you for your time, and, you know, development team, answer any questions.
Any questions of the applicant? I'll ask one that's been probably not, the ongoing question here, Andrew, is we've got local people in this, local people developing and employment opportunities. There's been some concern back and forth, you know, this started off with a different group, now we have another group involved. Are these people going to stay here? Is this, I mean, who's going to be, who, is PNS going to be involved in the development of this? Are we going to stay local, or is this really for sale?
This is, this is for progress at this point. It's been four years, we, in terms of, there is no change of ownership. That has been mentioned before, and that is not the case.
So the same owners are in place?
Yes, and that always has been the case. Mark Brackett is no longer involved in the project. That's where we took over, PNS Properties, and we have been, you know, working diligently with staff and, you know, whatever.
And I think that in all fairness to PNS and everybody, there's a lot of people have a lot of faith in Don and different PNS projects around here. And I, just for clarification for people into the future, if this is something that as we move forward, that, you know, the hope is that we stay local, we have people involved in here, I think it makes for a better development.
That's why I wanted to highlight in my beginning of the presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, I think we're going to take a five or 10-minute break, make it quick, and then we'll come back and open the public hearing, and hopefully we won't be here too soon. If we could, we need to continue on. The bodies are willing now, before the minds leave us. Let's get started. All right. Get ready for the public hearing? The public hearing is now open. What I'm going to do is I'm going to kind of work from this at my right to my left for questions or comments. If you have, if you have a comment, I'd like you to get questions for the staff or the applicant, we can try and have them answered for you. Try and be as concise as you can, and, you know, it is getting late, it's a little after nine.
You can go first, you don't want to.
Come on up here. Bring him up to the edge of one of the mics at the desk, if it's necessary.
My name is Stanley Khan, and my address is 8325 66th Avenue, right in the middle of this project. It's not very defined where we are, but we're in the middle on the west side of the street.
Can you bring that up for us?
Yes.
The parcel included.
It would be this parcel, I believe.
Not very clear.
Would be the parcel right here.
The green parcel? Okay.
Two and a third acres of land there.
Okay. Yes, sir. And your concern is, sir?
What is our concern? The concern is we're going to get right next to my bedroom window commercials, area.
I see what you're saying.
Mr. Khan's parcel's right here along 66th Avenue, the northern end is commercial. The, it's right up here on the screen, the, there is a 30-foot buffer, type B buffer, around this entire property, and there is, it'd be more green area to the, to the west and to the south. The, the north would have the, just the 30-foot buffer along that, so.
How big a, how big a piece is that, John?
Mr. Khan's parcel?
Yes.
Is a little over two acres, I believe.
Two acres?
My home.
Your parcel's a little over two acres?
Two and a third acres.
Two and a third. Is his house back upright against the north edge, or is he in the center of his property?
Well, let me go back to the aerial, and maybe he can describe it better as far as where the home sits on the property. Again, this aerial's not going to give us that much detail, but the
Yeah, we can see it.
The parcel is here.
Yeah, okay.
Now, let me go to the
Is there, is there a wall or anything to go with the buffer and the type, the type B buffer? Or is this a vegetative?
There is, it's, will be a six-foot opaque feature, but there is, there's not that much detail at this point in time, and that level of detail could be, you know, is a condition to compare, or the conceptual plan.
I mean, normally, we'd get into more precise stuff in a, in a site plan for this.
Yeah, we'd do the conceptual.
But I think that if he's concerned, and I, I can't say that I blame him, so Andrew, you all may have, it's my, whoever's going to handle buffering may as well come to the mic.
The other one comment I just to make, we've never been approached by them to even think of buying our property. Now's a good time.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure we can't help you there, I'm so, but, I think that if, in, in normal, normal circumstances, that we, a type B buffer between a residential and commercial, depending upon the circumstances, is, we have, that's a minimum requirement we have. The question is, is if he's, if there is some concern, how, how thick a buffer can you put in there?
Well, let me, before Todd speaks of the buffering and whatnot, I, I have not spoken to Mr. Khan and have not heard from him until this evening, and I apologize for that, that did happen with another gentleman, Mr. Walker, and I'm happy to set a time and, and discuss any, you know, issues that he may have, you know, beyond buffering or whatnot, but, you know, Todd, if you want to talk about the
In Todd's fairness to somebody, we've had this, we've had this in other places, and frankly, we've required heavier buffers than just even a type B buffer. We've gone to, we have an A buffer, but we've kind of gotten creative, and so I think that you all need to deal with that.
Right, and I'm not sure if this is part of the, the package or not that you have, but we have proposed a, it's a type B buffer, it's 30 feet, but in, in addition to a wall or a six-foot opaque feature, we are going to do some birmingham and a continuous hedge to kind of alleviate as much as possible.
We all, up here, we think we know what a type B buffer is, what I'm making is you're needing something bigger than a type B buffer.
Okay, well, that would be something we'd have to address, and I think that's
Probably got enough land to make this, but
Right, I would say I think we'd probably be agreeable to make that accommodation if he'd be.
I don't know how we deal with that, and Bob, you can help me here. On conceptual plan, if we want to add the criteria that we're going to have a heavier buffer than B there, you'll have to deal with it on a site plan later, but I think that we're going to want a bigger buffer than that.
Right, and two things is just, if you go with a type A or equivalent sort of performance standard, and then at, at preliminary PD plan to look at it in detail, because that'll be reviewed by you all, and we can put Mr. Khan, or whoever owns the property, that time to be notified specially during TRC, that sort of thing, so they can see it.
Okay.
Listen to that, be sure.
All right, make a note of that, somebody.
Mr. Khan needs to be
All right. Mr. Khan, did you have any other comments, sir?
Well, that's our biggest one, and I hear, what, five-foot buffer?
No, no. We're going to do better.
No, no, it's, it's, it'll be, it'll be a substantial buffer. It will not
I would stop to have you name it, it's got to come in early months.
Yes, sir.
That's five bedrooms, there's a bedroom behind it, still.
We're on your side, we're going to, we're going to hold our feet to the fire, sir.
We'll help you out.
And get, get in touch with them, he gave you your card, right? Good answer.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, sir. Mark?
Mark Trippson, 5020 12th Street. Pleasure to be here tonight. I'm curious about the 20 acres they're going to give for a park on the corner of 12th and 58, it's right down the road from me. Will it be a daytime-only park, or can it be only daytime park? No lights is what I'm trying to get at, or is that already in stone someplace?
I don't think we've even thought about it.
No, no, that level of detail has not been
That's one question we missed.
That level of detail has
You know, people ought to go home at night and not be playing basketball all night.
Mark, let's ask the applicant.
All right.
Originally, actually, that, that piece of property was slated for a four-plex baseball field, which is no longer in the cards. It, that is not going to happen, it is going to be open space, there is that five acre
Extra fields at Dodger Town now, I understand.
Right, exactly.
They're available, too. Dollar a year.
The light, the light question is a pretty safe no. It's going to be, we have the ability, or flexibility, I should say, with the five acres to do a community center and be within the 60% rule.
With, with regard to the park and park design, is that something that comes back to us in the future?
It, it is.
Deal with this?
Let me throw in one suggestion, now, this is an area, in some single-family districts, parks, if they're lighted for, for outdoor fields at night, that becomes a special exception use, you could put that in. You know, in other words, if, if, if it's the type of recreational use that's going to have outdoor lighting at night, that become a special exception use, you can go through that process, and we can, you can review the lighting plan in more detail at that time.
I'm going to be very resistant to something there other than a passive-use park. How do I, I got to make sure that I get my, my five cents in here, not my two cents, but my five cents in here, so that we control this now. I don't want to, I don't want to come somewhere later down the road in the process and say, oh, it's too late, Craig, sorry about that. Where, where do I drive the stake in the ground to limit this to a passive-use park?
I, I think you'd have to define what a passive-use park is, and let me, I understand, this is the point in time to get, to set the general parameters for the uses, you know, design things can kind of be done at, at another, another point in time. I think the concern that, that we had, and actually, we had a lot of conversations internally about, about what use to put on this site, and, you know, we, we don't have a crystal ball as far as a staff level in determining what would, what would be the best, because it's a pretty, it's a pretty long site, you might have some more active uses on one park, but not the other.
Did we say anything other than a passive-use park has to come to us and a special exception or whatever, so we can?
I don't want, my, my point is, I don't want people down there literally playing basketball and everything else at 11 o'clock at night. I want something with walking trails or something like that, and to me, that's passive use.
Okay.
Where do I drive my stake in the ground?
Actually, I'm not sure. You don't want ball fields, you don't want multi-use fields?
I don't want ball parks, I don't want lights, I don't
Well, well, lights are one thing, but if you want, if you don't want ball fields, we're going to have to figure out where to put parks, you know, across the street is a church of God that has a pretty active amount of activity to the north, there's the FPL.
I can see swings, I can see playgrounds, I can see stuff like that, but
I'm not sure you're going to get that defined tonight, that's the problem.
That's my question.
And we're not going to sit here till 11 o'clock.
Where do I drive my stake in the ground?
That part I can promise.
Well, this thing's be ongoing, won't it? I mean, as you say, you don't know what you're going to put in there.
Right. That's why, I think what we need to do is find, is if there's a criteria, and we can't define it, then you need to at least say, this is my stake in the ground, if anything different than this, it has to come back. I mean, that's
That's fair, well, I'm just giving you fair warning that I'm going to be very stiff about what goes in that park down there, okay? I'm going to be very concerned.
I'm not sure how to define passive use, but
I don't either.
But we may have to come up with something later. I don't think any of us know what we want out there right now, Bob, and I don't think we're, I don't think we're willing to commit to it tonight.
I know what I don't want.
A bunch of acres is probably going to end up being a fire station at some point.
Well, yeah, well, that's the community service section of it, they have another section they can do that with.
Right. So, okay, anything else, Mark?
Yes, just out of curiosity, I was wondering about this density transfer. You take, I call that piece 20 acres for easy figuring, that's three units the acre if you got it rezoned, that's 60 units. Are they going to move the full 60? Or would it be like across the road that Oaks of Vero, on their three units, they ended up with two or less on it? So, what's going to transfer on this thing? Because this, I think this is a precedent on the density transfer, isn't it?
It is, the way it was, and I'm not sure this mathematically, they, they had two calculations in our book.
Yeah, I could not understand that.
One was the number that was maximum, which I think used the whole 18 acres in three times three. What they have said is that they took five acres off of that and multiplied it times three, because the community service use, they did not get credit for.
Hmm, but as a, as a property owner, then they're going to move the max, but if, if I bought the place to develop, I would never get the max, the max doesn't get
Yeah, you never, you never realize
You never see it's 1.5 or 1.8 units per acre, and I'm just, it looks like this is a precedent-setting thing, moving the density around. Maybe it's not, I don't know, but y'all know.
Well, just, just one point, there is a possibility, if someone did a PD on that site, that he could get the maximum, and that's what we're looking at there. And with, and with the multifamily sites, there's no question, the Army, the Breezy Village site, there's no question that you can get your full yield in multifamily. But here, what we're looking at is, yeah, if you develop in a conventional way in RS3, you're going to get around two maybe, but there is a possibility to get more yield if you do a PD, and that was our underlying thoughts when we, when we did that.
I was curious, and I'm curious, does this thing throw the urban service area out in the trash?
No.
No.
It still aren't. How'd they get outside of it someplace then? I don't understand that either.
This is, actually, this is a, a specific kind of exception to the urban service area rule that we created in the comp plan back in, I think, 1999, 1998, 99. We actually did it when Point West was looking at coming in.
Which is the Polo Crowns attached to, as they went back in time, that was how it was done.
Yeah, the, the whole idea is, we looked at, what's a good kind of development, and where would it be appropriate, and how can we provide incentives to do it? And we came up with this strategy.
So, it's borderline being on
Exactly.
Point West borderline, too, I don't know where the line is down there.
Point, Point West is hat, like, half inside and half outside, and this is really the same, you know, about half in, half out.
That is a loophole, Mark.
Loopholes are great, if you need them. Thanks.
Take advantage of them.
Anybody else on this side of the room? Okay. Mr. Walker?
Hello, I'm Guilford Walker, at 2442 Buena Vista Boulevard. I'm going to make this quite short. I'm coming here on behalf of my father, who wanted me to present to the planning and zoning a certified copy of the easement that he has from his Grove that goes into the middle of Phase 3, and just want to make sure you're aware of that.
The clerk will record it for you. If you'll give it to her.
John, where is that?
Yeah, on the mark map, John, do you know about?
Yeah, let me show you on the aerial. This is the Walker property. Hold on here.
Other aerial.
We'll get it there in a second. This is the Walker property, just south of Phase 3. They have an easement that runs up to 81st Street, and then I believe over across 81st Street. And what'll need to happen is, there'll need to be alternate accommodations made by the Liberty Park developer to essentially get the Walkers to sign off on extinguishing that easement and giving them other access rights that essentially makes sense with the way the project's developed.
Gil, are you current, using that easement?
Yes, sir, we use, well, we drive it at least, you know, once a month, something like that, make sure it's still, you know, we could still drive a bowl. It's, it's our north entrance to the Grove.
That's the right answer.
Okay, any, excuse me, Andrew?
If you give the clerk that, Gil, she'll record it and put it in the record, and it'll be available to anybody. I had spoken to Mr. Walker several times before this evening, and, and he's going to get back to me in short order to get together with him and, you know, address the issues, so it should be probably
It's going to have to be addressed, which you obviously know. It'll have to be addressed, which you obviously know. Okay, anybody else over here? And then I'll move over to here.
This is the preacher's, is this?
Yeah, well, I had the hand went up over here, so I just tracked. NASA.
Hi, my name's Nancy Johansson, and I have property at 7100 77th Street, and I'm interested to know about 70th Avenue. I know it shows from Liberty Park to 510, I'm just wondering if it's going to go from Liberty Park to 77th Street.
John, in serious is, but I'm not sure that it will happen until the county gets around to paving it.
And Mr. Hamner is, is correct, right now, 70th Avenue stops at 85th Street, and that's the southern end of Powerline Road. If, and when this project gets built, the, the southern point would be the southern boundary of, of the Liberty Park project. From a planning standpoint, we would certainly like to see it go down to 69th Street and provide a neighborhood collector. As Mr. Hamner pointed out, until the, the county actually does it, it's probably quite a, quite a distant improvement as far as that, because it's not
Are you worried about your lifetime, your kids, or your grandkids?
No, I'm just wondering, because I know they're going to widen 77th Street also, so we'll be losing that property, and I'm just wondering if we're going to be losing property on the other side as well.
On the other side, too.
I, I'm, I'm not putting you I'm not... I'm not sure how quickly 77th will be done either.
I don't think it's in the five-year plan, is it, Bob?
So, it's way...
In the 25-year plan, I'm not familiar with it even.
If you heard us talking about the Barbour Street intersection, which seems to be more current, but, you know, I'm not sure if 77th and 71st is something that's going to happen very quickly.
Nancy, we have what's called a five- and a 25-year plan, and it's not on either one of those plans, so it's going to be past 25 years. And to get into the system, it takes 13 years.
Oh, it's easing it in the system.
Between the engineering and the funding and actually... So, is that a good answer?
That kind of answers my question. Thank you.
Just don't come ask us to give up the dedicated rights of the road. We don't want to do that anymore.
I'm just a developer, not an assistant.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, I'm Tammy Vogel. I have property at 7375 85th Street.
Okay, where are you, Tammy? 7375?
85th Street, so it's west of 70th Avenue.
Right.
Right on 85th Street.
Okay. On the north side?
On the south side.
Oh, is this you, the white?
That's me.
That's you. We go around you there?
Yeah, they go around me.
Get it on, please.
And I'm just curious, it's going to be trails and walkways around my property?
Looks like.
From what I understand?
Correct. It'll be green area. There'll be a buffer immediately in the surrounding. And then, again, these are trails that are a general depiction of the location.
What is the buffer around her house?
Again, that's the wider buffer. That is the 30-foot Type B that's around both of these properties. And again, those trails are general depictions of where they'll go on the conceptual plan.
Is that tennis courts to the east? What is that?
Yes. Tammy, that means it'll be a 30-foot section from the back of your property line wide.
Are you concerned about noise, people? I mean, are you... Or do you want to be connected? Where you can get out and walk?
No, I don't want to be connected. Thank you.
Just checking, you know? I mean, you...
What does that mean?
Better than wired.
I just want to make sure that there's a buffer, number one. And number two is that, you know, they're not going to be coming. People are not going to be... The trails are going to be lined where they can see where they're going, and they're not going to be wandering off.
No, there'll be a very distinct buffer in between you and that project.
I think that what we can do, and we've always leaned toward this on big projects. If we have people, and we've done this before, where they have houses singled out in it, we tend to err on buffers to the wider and bigger and deeper sides than we do to even the Type B buffer. So, as we told Mr. Kahn, I think we can simply make it a statement that we'd like to see a heavier-duty buffer there than maybe was planned and even... Because they have space to do this.
And if you'll get on their mailing list, they'll mail you when the next project comes up for a hearing, because that specific detail will be before this board.
Okay. And I just have one other quick question. Since it is right on County Road 510, the road's going to come over, and the county did buy part of my property for that, would there ever be in the future... Would I be able to rezone it to commercial?
Bob?
Mr. Keating here is the expert.
I wouldn't think so, no.
No, so it'll always remain what it is. It's grandfathered in as ag. So, it'll always remain that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody off from the center over to the left? My left. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Beverly O'Neil. I live at 9790 61st Place in Sebastian. I live in Breezy Village. And Breezy Village is Breezy Village Mobile Home Subdivision, Unit 1. That's the proper name of our subdivision. We're curious to know, looking at that property, and we've been to other hearings where they were going to put some townhouses up there that never occurred.
That's right.
Where is the access to that property? How's anybody going to get on that piece of 4 acres?
Earlier tonight, we discussed that. We asked if there was a public access included in this transfer of ownership, and there is not. It's not going to be open to the public, but I'm assuming that Breezy Village is right there so they can walk out there. But there's not going to be an access for other people for a park, if that's what you mean.
How is anybody going to get on the property?
The only access that I'm aware of is just from the terminus of 99th Street at this location. There's... It's strange, because one of the calls I received was from a surrounding property owner that actually owned the acre that comes down like...
Oh, my gosh.
Right here. So, there's a little connection here where 99th Street right-of-way contacts it at the very, what would be the northeast corner of the property, from what I can see on the property appraisers' maps. But...
That was how they were going to access the multifamily, wasn't it, down that road?
Well, we never knew how they were going to access that. And we have a paper street that we're not interested in developing at 98th Street that goes right up to the center, is in the center of our development. And we don't care to have that a public access either. We're all private roads in there, and we maintain those, so we have that concern.
Right.
We're glad it's going to be conservation.
I would hope so.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Beverly.
Anyone else care to comment before we close the public hearing? Are we sure anybody doesn't want to comment before we close the public hearing? Okay. Public hearing's closed. Steve is gone, right?
No.
All right. Commissioners, we got a project in front of us. We've got some thoughts and issues. Do I have a motion?
I had one little comment.
Yeah, I have questions.
Okay, you have more questions. That's fine.
I... On the Rial Park that's on the east side of 66, what access is it going to be for the public on the east side of that? I mean, how are they going to be integrated into that?
Let me just go back a slight or two. It doesn't show very well on the conceptual plan, but this is 81st Street, and there's actually an access point, a driveway from 81st Street right here for the public access. And then there's some parking right here, a pavilion, a little traffic circle. This is... It's under the tree, so it's hard to see, but it's all...
So, you're talking about a pavilion that people could have a picnic at and things like that?
And this is the paved driveway about midway.
What are those green... The green things in the park there, the squares?
Trees.
Oh, those are... The green rectangles are sports fields.
Sports fields?
Yes. Those are athletic fields.
Oh, like soccer fields, you mean?
Soccer field.
Stay focused. Stay focused. Okay. Donna, you got a question?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy. We discussed earlier in tonight's meeting the phasing of the areas that the density is being transferred from.
Right.
And I would like to talk to you about the property on Indian River Boulevard that has the estuary and waterway... Water environmental, you know, the really nice one, about making that the number one, the first piece of property that gets a transfer of density.
As opposed to...
Breezy Village.
Okay. CGL?
I knew he'd get in this sooner or later.
The first piece is due to be Rial Park, is that correct?
You showed the density table. You're just asking if it can be modified to...
Sequencing.
Sequencing. Thank you, Craig. Exactly.
Hi, Joseph Scholkey. Scholkey, Bill Stoddard for the record. And Donna, the really... The parcels were chosen really to kind of correlate with our phasing and when we're going to get the density. As far as if that is in the third phase or first phase, it could be bumped to the first phase and would not really affect anything detrimentally on the project or what have you.
Oh, thank you. That was very kind of you. I appreciate that.
So, that means that you'd have the... The first two would be Rial Park and the Indian River Lagoon?
Well, we still need to do Breezy Village, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, because we need the density for the first phase, because...
So, you'd do all three?
Basically, it was just a mathematical...
Okay, so we do all three. So, you'd have Indian River Lagoon, Breezy Village, and Rial in the first phase?
Yes.
Would that be correct? And then what... And after that, we...
We could go with the rest of the schedule after that.
Okay.
Okay, so we can make the Indian River Boulevard the 15 and the 41 acres as part of Phase 1?
Yes, ma'am.
Before Breezy Village.
You're going to have all three, is what he's saying. In Phase 1, he said you're going to get all three. You'll have Breezy Village.
It could be the very first, yeah.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear. Don't slap me now, George. I'm on a roll. Jeez.
You avoided getting up there all night tonight. You've done well.
I did. I did a good job at it. Andrew was stealing my thunder tonight. I'm doing a good job at it, too.
Any other questions?
Okay, that's... Not right now.
You're going to have a discussion after... Yeah, I thought if we get a motion, I think, or we can talk about... We've mentioned several things about increasing the buffering. We don't have a density level or a buffering level necessary, but it would be a minimum of what we call Type A. You might even want to throw in 50 feet or something. But the point is, is a buffering around both these properties. Something if parks come back is above passive use, that they have to come in as special exception use. I'm sure our planning staff will wrinkle their heads because they don't know what that means, but that's not our problem. That's their problem.
I'll make a motion to adopt as presented with staff recommendations with some exceptions that we need to...
With some additions.
Some additions.
Second the motion. We've got to get the additions first. Just hang in here for a second.
My addition is, I want somehow to define the passive use for the acreage down south. That, to me, means walking pass, bike pass, picnic areas, stuff like that. But you guys, the experts, you know, if you could come up with something like that for me, that would be nice. The second would be the sequencing of the transfer of the density. Anybody else want to jump in with theirs? Go right ahead.
The additional buffering.
The additional buffering for...
For all three outfalls?
Mr. Kahn's, right.
Well, it's all three properties.
Okay, all three properties, yeah.
The easement issue. The easement issue, did you want that to be one?
Oh, yes.
And then you got to... They've got to solve the easement problem.
Yes, solve the easement problem with Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm not quite sure it's appropriate for the county to get involved with private easements. That's a private matter. If he's... Property rights has been infringed, he needs to go to the court of law to enforce those rights.
Okay. So, we... This is not... We haven't... We haven't had that as criteria in the past?
Yeah.
I thought we've had that. I...
No, I mean, maybe. My concern is that that's a...
I mean, I think that the way... It's probably going to be... It may be an issue, but it's going to have to be solved. So, whether we have it as a criteria or not, I think, is probably a muse. But I don't...
Your warning is noted and ignored. Screaming right along the speed of dark. Anybody else?
Okay, those are the additions. And now, is anybody second this?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
I'll do it again.
Okay. Discussion. Thoughts, promises, word of mouth. Okay.
I'll go, George. Thank you. Can I declare my vote now? Is that allowed?
I suspect we're going to hear it.
Mr. Kennedy, you're be commended for your planning and vision and the people that you've used in doing this. This is a... It is an outstanding project, and great people are involved in it. I'm going to vote against the project, and I want to explain the reasoning. I think the one of myself, one of the basic premise of the comprehensive plan is the urban service line. And there are... I certainly wish that this project were somewhere in hundreds and hundreds of acres that are available inside that urban service area. This pushes across that line. I think it encourages the loss of agricultural properties, encourages the loss of agricultural properties, which I hate to see the loss of. If this does proceed, the other thing that I would like to see negotiated is a large increase in the trade-off between the area outside the urban service area and the trade-off inside the urban service area. Looks like it's about five to one now. Maybe not that great. But I think there should... If you're going to provide the green space inside the urban service area as a trade-off, that trade-off should be much, much closer to one to one, in my opinion. So, because it extends across that urban service line, that's the reason that I'm going to vote against it. Okay?
Any other discussion, comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Like so?
Opposed. Aye.
We have two opposed. Right. Well, the project passes, 5-2.
He needs to define his opposition for the record.
Right, that's...
I have the same concerns. And I can see legally, they can jump across like that, because we're only providing services and sewer and water and things like that. And this is a loophole in it. But it's... I think it's a bad loophole for agriculture. It sets up a dangerous precedent for the rest of the county, definitely. I mean, I can see going further west on 510, the same thing happening all the way around. And pretty soon, it's the next... We're going to move the urban service area now.
No, this is an allowance in the comp plan. You know, you may not like this, but it is in the comp plan, and it is an allowance. And no, the urban service area does not move.
I appreciate that.
It's... It is...
They all have their opinion, and so we're not here to debate that tonight. We've talked about it. Thank you, sir.
He just has to go on record for his note.
Okay. Next item is Commissioners Matters. Thank you, gentlemen.
I have one issue.
Go ahead. Go ahead. I only have one small issue. Would somebody please change the clock on the wall?
[laughing]
I don't feel like it's 8 o'clock. Thank you.
Bob, I had an issue for you or...
If you could clear the chambers quickly, we appreciate it. The good news is, y'all are done. We've still got a little more to do. Thank you.
I had an issue. I had a note from Dr. Adair, which we've had many issues with. He pointed out to me that for an application site plan project appeals form, if you are the applicant, it only costs $400 for an appeal process. However, if you're one of the neighbors, like Mr. Trippson or... Excuse me, or somebody, it's $800. Why is it twice as much for a resident to appeal than it is for a developer to appeal? That is an ordinarily outrageous differential burden on the public.
The result may seem outrageous to you, that the application fees are based on how much staff time it takes. An applicant's already paid probably a couple thousand dollars in application fees for something like that. And it's less staff time involved in an appeal from them because of work we've already done with them. With applicants, we just have to spend more time. We have to meet with our attorney's office and them and kind of work out usually how the appeals run. So, it's just based on our staff time. And the applicant's already paid a lot.
It still seems heavy to me. But that's a good public answer. Thank you.
What's your good answer? Is that...
That's... Yeah, it's a legitimate answer. I can't do anything about it in other words.
Any other Commissioner Matters, Planning Matters?
I do have a few, Mr. Chairman. Three things that the Board of Commissioners did at their March 18th meeting, need to update you on. First was the Latter Day Saints Church, the redevelopment on 12th Street, that special exception. That was approved by the board with some additional conditions after it came to you all. The kind of the change in the landscaping to keep intruders out along that one edge. Also, the shielding of the lights. The condition now, they have to meet the corridor requirements and shield all the lighting. And they also came in and gave us the specs. It's a low-decibel AC unit system that they're using. So, those things kind of got worked out, and it seemed to go along pretty well. Also, they heard two appeals on ocean concrete. One that had come before you all on the denial of the site plan application extension. The board upheld your decision on that. There was also an appeal of a determination from the attorney's office that the appeal fee was untimely for, I think, basically their merits appeal, and the board upheld that as well. And then the third thing, you all got kind of an assignment.
In addition to the mine anymore?
Yeah, just... Right, right, right.
Mr. Glenn.
One more piece of homework. The legislative... The legislators in 2007 for the state basically required all the local governments to establish an affordable housing advisory committee. So the county has reestablished its affordable housing advisory committee, had one for several years. Some of the representation criteria, one of the, I think 11 members is to be a member, oh, I'm sorry, 16 members. One of the members has to be a planning zoning commission member. And the tasks of this committee is to advise the Board of County Commissioners on affordable